I'd like to call this meeting of the Board of Supervisors, work session, budget meeting for April 17th at the King William County Administration Building to order. This last, I mean this. Wait, I'll get over here. All right, did you call parties?
Mr. Hodges?
Here.
Mr. Miskowski?
Here.
Mr. Garber?
Here.
Mr. Moran?
Here.
Mr. Greenwood?
Here. Next item on the agenda, we have the review and adoption of the meeting agenda, the amended meeting agenda.
Mr. Chairman, a move adoption.
Second. We have a motion on second to adopt the meeting agenda in need of review. Ms. Larson, Coral.
Mr. Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Garber?
Aye.
Mr. Moran?
Aye.
Mr. Hodges?
Aye.
Mr. Greenwood?
Aye.
Next item on the agenda, we have fiscal year 2021 county operating budget review and adjustments. Number eight, we have King William County Public Schools.
Can you talk me to approach the podium where I can project, I can use my, what's it, my teacher voice?
There's no microphone over there.
Yeah, we could probably be better over there that way.
Okay, thank you.
You might be on the screen.
And you have in front of you the presentation to follow along with. First, I'd like to say good morning Chairman Greenwood, Board of Supervisors, Ms. Tassanari, and other guests. Thank you for allowing me to present to you regarding the revised FY '21 budget request for King William County Public Schools. I'd like to start by letting you know that we continue to pray for every member of our community in hopes that they all remain safe and healthy during the current global pandemic. These are unprecedented times, and my staff and I continue to wade through the daily challenges we face with providing continuity of learning to all of our students, along with wraparound services ranging from academic and mental health counseling to providing meals to families. Many of our staff are working longer hours than prior to the pandemic outbreak, and we all have come to realize that schools are the heart and soul of a small community like King William. We asked our teachers to completely redesign the school, what school looks like for our children, and they did this within a matter of days. Teachers have prepared and distributed instructional packets at Cool Spring Primary School and equipped an elementary school, and created online learning opportunities through Schoology at Hamilton Homes Middle School and King William High School. Our special education teachers and administrators continue to hold virtual and telephone IEP meetings for the families of students with disabilities, 92 to date. As you may know, the schools have enhanced our Wi-Fi connectivity to extend in the parking lots of Hamilton Homes Middle School and King William High School for use by students and community members. King William High School students sponsored a food drive for King William residents in need. These students collected over $1,400 in donations and distributed over 2,000 pounds of food in five days and are already preparing for a second food drive. School nutrition staff continue to distribute meals for our children and have joined with community churches to provide easier access to meet this final need, food for all. Just this week alone, 924 meals were provided to our children. Also, King William County Public Schools opened the Hamilton Homes Middle School parking lot to a local business who donated nearly 500 quarts of Brunswick stew to families. And we are prepared to partner with county agencies and open our facilities for essential personnel in need of childcare services. So as you can see, we have not been resting on our laurels. We have been given an impossible task, and we have met it head on. I'd also like to say that I spoke with a parent yesterday who was so overjoyed that her child's teacher called him and read to him one-on-one for 15 minutes. So as opposed to what some people have said about teachers taking vacation, that is not the truth. Now on to the budget. And please know that we understand that due to the COVID-19 pandemic and the resulting economic slowdown, King William County will not receive expected revenues. However, the $460,000 funding deficit to the schools represents a 4.6% decrease from current year level funding and an 8.6% decrease in the proposed funding for March 10th, 2020. Along with the current proposed decrease to schools from the county, we are facing a preliminary decrease from the state of 382,000 or a total of nearly $843,000, which does not include likely deficits from the state sales tax and federal funding. Additionally, please recall that in FY 2019, the school division did not receive $106,000 that was appropriated and may face another shortfall in this current FY 2020 of $226,000 of appropriated funds. Again, realizing that we are in chartered waters, we have made cuts to our original proposed budget to include raises, new positions, the health insurance increase, transportation incentive, and other targeted expenditures totaling $1.26 million. This leaves us with a current shortfall of $576,000, which includes the VRS rate increases to teachers, group life, and health insurance credit totaling $225,000. Additionally, we still face unfunded mandates passed through the General Assembly to include mental health training for all teachers and the provision of feminine products in all of our girls bathrooms, grades five through 12. This deficit amount will result from a possible loss of personnel and/or instructional programs and services which will directly impact our students. Regarding capital funds for next year, we continue to have needs that have languished in years past. You may recall that we entered into several energy savings programs to alleviate the county's costs in helping King William County Public Schools with deferred maintenance concerns. However, these efforts do not make us whole. We have identified a few critical needs that must be addressed as soon as possible. We must purchase new Chromebooks at King William High School to sustain our one-to-one program. We need to replace the sound system in the high school gym, which has been deemed unreparable. We need to resurface the parking lot at King William High School before it too becomes under peril. If not resurfaced now, it will need to be milled and repaid, which would more than triple the cost. We continue to lag behind in our bus replacement plan with nearly 50% over the suggested mileage usage. And we need to replace a broken lawnmower to offset some of the lawn maintenance costs to our athletic fields. These monies could come from the restricted funds earmarked for King William County Public Schools and other carryover funds for FY '19. So in conclusion, while we face tough times ahead, King William County Public Schools is still charged with and committed to the education of our children and the well-being of our community, regardless of what we may face tomorrow. I ask that you help us by supporting our need to carry on in spite of these challenges. Thank you. I'm looking for any questions you may have. Start with them. Bill?
Bobby, in the revised projections, the $200,000 plus in general property taxes, that just reflected in the changing of the rate for the calendar year '21?
It's basically the projected growth. We usually see a either a 1.5% to 2.5% growth. And since we are still going to be the beneficiary of some of the growth that's ongoing right now into next year, I went ahead and included that. Now, the rate, I did not incorporate any of the reassessment rate except for that 1%, which was allowable. So half of the year is projected at 73 cents per 100.
Yes, if I could. Dr. White, have any employees at the school nonessential been furloughed?
We have not. What we've done is we've cut off all of our services, our additional services, we ended those. But individuals who have contracted with us, either as our employees, have not been furloughed, no. And one thing is if we--
If we were to furlough our employees, our unemployment, we would be hit with 100% of that. So we would pay the same amount and not be able to have them working. And they could get that up to four months. So in that situation, it would actually cost us more. We did cut down anybody that was a part-time employee. They have either not working or working reduced hours to help with the instructional needs right now, but they, those have been cut significantly. But our full-time employees, nutrition, are working with the food distribution, and then our other employees are still working in some capacity.
The cost savings that y'all have initiated, do y'all have a projection on the, on the potential savings?
For the remainder of this year's budget?
Yeah.
Honestly, with this shortfall, I don't foresee us having a savings. How the school system works is a lot of the supplies and instructional costs are sunk at the beginning of the year, so we've paid for those for the entire year. So when I look at our budget, we've used the majority of our budget. The only areas we may have savings would be in fuel and areas like that, but then there are other costs that because of this situation, we've had to buy more paper for packets. We've had to purchase a program that will help with the evaluation process for the teachers. There's been additional expenses because we haven't been able to be in the location to be able to perform our work.
Thank you.
Pass the same question. I have this, but there has to be some savings because there's a school, fuel being one of them, but understand, offset with other costs, paper, printing.
And any savings that we do have, that money would then roll over to our capital fund, which then we would come to you all for approval of any of those funds. But at this point, it's, it's really hard to juggle those numbers with the 226 that could possibly not be funded for this year.
Valued question. Could you explain again furlough versus retaining the, I thought that the state would pick up a portion of those unemployment payments?
So how are, are King William County Public Schools is set up with BEC is that they send us commitments. So we receive some commitments from people that used to work for us last year that now work for someone else, but because they got furloughed from their new job, there, it goes back on whatever the base period, who they worked for the base period. So if we were to let anyone go, they would go back, and if they worked for us last year, we would pay 100% of that. And then there's the other thing that they just said something about an extra $600. So I haven't seen any bills from BEC on that yet, but I'm expecting those for the ones that we have been hit for.
Yeah, the way Virginia Employment Commission unemployment is set up is if you let somebody go and they qualify for unemployment, you're basically carrying them for that entire period that they're on it. I've been through that a few times myself. I can confirm that it's not, it's not as easy as just letting them go, you know, if they can get themselves qualified for it, you get, you get a very big bill.
I was hoping you could push that bill completely, at least the state.
Well, see, that's the thing, the state pays it, but the state pays it by making you pay the state, right? Basically, Virginia Employment Commission sends you, again, a huge bill for more or less 100% of what that person would have made in that pay period that they're going to be on unemployment. And your only hope is that you can either prove that they don't qualify, which I've been able to do, because most of the time if I'm letting somebody go, I'm firing them for cost. But the few times that they have been able to qualify, your hope is that they can just find employment quickly, because otherwise, yeah, you're carrying them for four, and I guess it's not six. I mean, with the extension of the CARES Act.
Most of the bills that we've received as commitments, like telling us, it's about 25,000 so far, and we've only received five of them, and some of them are 19 weeks, some are 26 weeks. They range in weeks at this point.
Yeah, I think BEC is just at sixes and sevens with it right now, especially waiting for the rest of the federal money to come in from the CARES Act that hasn't arrived yet, so.
And I've put in a few calls to them to better understand it, and I've received one back, but there's some more questions I have, so I'm, I'm learning as I go right there.
She's doing an outstanding job for us, though, making sure that we are--
Yeah, I mean, I guess the most unfortunate thing in here really, you know, trying to keep the general property taxes level as possible, but the majority of these are, you know, business taxes that we're going to see in all likelihood reductions, but hopefully short-term, you know? That's all we can really hope for right now, is that we can recover from this, recover quickly and recover fully. You know, short of that, there's not, unless we want to increase those taxes, which I don't think it is the, the right thing to do in this climate for sure, you know, we're just going to have to unravel this out quickly best. Hope it's not a replay of 2008, 2009. You know, that's the biggest thing in all of this, you know, it really felt like we were about to turn a corner, you know, on the education side, on the county side, you know, really start to, rather than, you know, plug, plug holes in the dam, actually start to institute some policies that can, you know, carry us for 10 years, 15 years, and how we hire, how we pay, how we increase pay. But of course, this is, this is upended the apple cart there. So again, hopefully, hopefully we recover and recover fully, but--
Travis, we were in that zone--
We really were.
--four or five days ago.
We really were. I was excited.
Dr. White?
Yes, sir.
If we were to ask you to go back with your team and list your, your needs and priority order, would you be able to do that?
Yes, we could certainly do that.
I don't know.
What can you do? What can you do about that? And have those, sorry, Bill, can you hear me?
Yeah, it's hard sometimes. You're my son.
Oh, turn it--
This one?
Yeah.
It's a slow one.
Should be on, just get closer to it.
Yeah.
Yeah, you gotta be right on that microphone board quarter. I noticed, Bobby, this is a capital thing, and, but didn't we just grasp in at minute amounts, I mean, I know it's 10,000, but the law went on. We have one with parts and wreck that we just bought that you could share.
Well, I mean, what we have, we utilize.
You have it all the time? I'm asking.
During the growing season, yes, we do.
Yeah, we're cutting our athletic fields at least twice a week. Anyone else? Thank you, Dr. White. Thank you, we really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. White.
Thank you.
Mr. Miskowski, can I clarify a little bit on the question that you had asked earlier?
Yes.
One of the reasons that you see an increase in the projection for the real property is also because during this reassessment, we have found a lot of properties that were not included in the tax rolls. Because of the reassessment, new property, new construction is being put on the tax roll faster, and so I had a much cleaned up version of what our true tax base was.
I think, you may misunderstand my question, maybe phrase it clearly, that we're actually, in the projected, the initial projection, we were at 8 million, basically 8.8 million, and then the revised were 8.5. My question was, what was the reason for the downgrade in the projection?
For the schools?
From, yeah, for general property tax. So they presented us here in this presentation, we've got the initial projection for 2021 at 8.8, and then the revised at 8.5.
Because of the reduction, because I had anticipated that we would be, the original budget was built off of not the 1% for the reassessment.
So yeah, so that's what I thought.
So that, that's what it is, is that 300,000 difference.
Thank you.
Moving on, the next, we have on the agenda, general government. And so on Board of Supervisors, County Administration.
You will note that with the Board of Supervisors, there is a minimal increase. This increase is due to this civic clerk software that was purchased about four to five months ago, and this will then enable us to go to tablets and an electronic format or platform to be able to distribute the board packets. This will also be available to all of the commissions and boards, planning commission, VZA, rec, everybody. It'll make it a lot easier to get the information out, to make corrections or adjustments, and it will be much better for us posting it on the website because we are also, it is dovetails into the new website software, which should have been implemented by now, but because of the pandemic, it'll be May before it is implemented. But we anticipate having everything up and running for the boards and commissions by July. So that's the only increase for the Board of Supervisors.
And what is it now?
It was around $4,000.
Bobby, does the travel and training, is, is the, are the VACO meetings a part of that, or?
Yes, they are.
They are?
Yes. Generally, that covers just three board members traveling per year.
Yeah, I've spoken to Lawrence Sumkins in King and Queen County, and they, they only send their chairman and vice chairman to the, to big events like, you know, Homestead and things like that. I mean, it would be a minimal savings, I guess. That might be something, you know, to show everybody we are interested in cutting anyway.
Okay.
So the venue is extremely helpful, especially for new people. Sending our chair and vice chair would be like going back again to the same thing, although there are new things continuously, but I learned an awful lot back in November that you're right, it is a savings, but it's minimal, absolutely minimal versus the value.
I think that's one--
Just a thought.
She wanted to send all of us, or most of us this year, but since it all got canceled, that would have maybe helped.
That was a workshop to hit.
Right, still it all together. I agree, it doesn't have to be the vice chair and chair, it could be two people if you want to send two people and let the new people go, but like you said, it's minimal. And if an extra person would like to go, I don't see the problem. Like I said, I don't think it saves that much.
I don't know that there's any other venue to get that.
Kind of train, right.
I gotta agree with that. I don't see cutting, I mean, if you really put a dent in anything, it'd be one thing, but it really won't.
None of us, I don't believe any of us claim mileage to, where was I coming from? Hot Springs, none of us claim that mileage, so we, we're not-- On the, on the, we paid one, the employee benefits line with the system.
That's FICA, federal insurance. It's a requirement.
I mean, if, if we wanted to do something, maybe it's been on the board long enough that I've, used to have health insurance even.
Well, I know, like I said, we cut a lot.
If we wanna, if we wanna make a show of something, you know, we could do, we could do a 10 or 20% cut in our, in our salaries.
I don't agree with that, because like I said, we should have been getting raises all along. We've not had a raise in over 20 years, so that's just my opinion. I mean, everybody says that compared to other counties.
I'm doing it for less than I did when I first--
When I went to the chairman's seminar that I did get to go to before this, some of the other candidates are making way more than we are, so.
That's true. Well, I think maybe if nothing else, we should agree that if it comes to where anybody's taken, that goes, not here, that we share in that thing.
That's true. Like I said, we've already taken, we've taken our share, we've given up our health insurance. We, we never had any increases when all the other staff has gotten increases, at least since we've been on the board, we've never taken an increase, and we've taken a cut in our health insurance, but it's hurt you and Mr. Otto, so.
People are having issues.
Just get that mic closer to you.
This one?
This, this.
Still one.
Yeah, I'm having issues too.
I gotta get that right.
Test one, two, one, two. There you go. Bobby, if we just kept everything like in 20, we're gonna be same. I know, it's a big question. We can't do it today, and then maybe adjustments later on because we really don't know where this is going or where this is going to bounce to.
Well, realistically, I do believe that you're going to have to come back and revisit the '21 budget at some point.
It's only our best.
Yes, it's bad. I'm hoping for the good. I'm hoping that things will turn up quickly, and mid FY '21, you will be able to see that the revenues are coming in in a timely manner and at a higher rate than's been projected, and then be able to go back and revisit the schools or any other, you know, entities that you're interested in providing additional funding to. You're probably talking about $200,000 between what's being recommended and what the current budget is this year? Is that correct, Natasha?
Or just more?
No, the total budget.
Oh, the total budget.
Right, we're recommending 25.8, and the current one is almost 25.6. We could do it. We definitely could do it. We would probably have to--
Come back, correct? Knowing we may have to come back and adjust.
Correct. I mean, we would probably have to tackle the schools a little bit more, but not that much. We would have to look at our volunteer organizations. We would need to definitely look at the sick leave and the annual leave that I sent memos out on, either capping or eliminating.
Repeat that again.
The staffing, which included the leave payouts, you know, eliminating the sick leave payout completely and maybe capping the annual leave, because though that won't be a specified hard number that I could give you, we know that we pay out annually at least $30,000 for those types of payouts. At the same time, Natasha and Travis are working with Hanover County to see if we can negotiate a reduced contract for our Hanover system, the radio system. I have no idea what that would be. Mr. Harris is retiring after many years as a county administrator and hoping he will feel generous towards us, because we spend about $360,000 on that annually, and then Motorola is about another $115,000 or so. So if we could see a reduction there, and then Natasha made me aware today that Versa, who is our insurance provider, is talking about giving us a reduction of 15% on our vehicle insurance, and we generally pay about $35,000, $38,000 on vehicle insurance. So that's not a lot, but it is something. And then Loda, which is something that we provide to our career fire medics and to the volunteer organizations, we're going to scrub that, and because it's not identified by an individual. I, we don't pay Loda for Travis Miskowski volunteering at West Point. We pay Loda for positions, just a combined position number.
Right, just to be clear, I don't volunteer at West.
No, 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 I, yeah, I'm sorry. It was just an example, but that's what I'm saying, is that it's not identified by the individual, it's identified by the number, and so we're going to be scrubbing that as well. So if, say, Mangahick actually has an active volunteer force of 10, then that's all we're going to provide Loda for is 10, because the reality of 10 of their volunteers being injured at the same time is minimal, and Loda is expensive, but it is well worth it.
With the funding that we allocate, why isn't that requirement funded by them as well? It looks like a, I had to look it up, of course, and I understand it now, but why are we paying them? Is it just an agreement from years past?
It was, it was, well, we were doing it when I got here, and it's been questioned before, but it's just been carried on, you know, traditionally we had maybe not funded their full request or forefunded them to the level that was fully appropriate, because another, another thing that we did to, in recognition that really honestly, they don't have the money to pay for it. None of the volunteer organizations had the money to pay for it. They didn't have the money to pay for their operations, so.
And it's through our insurance too, so we probably--
And it's through our insurance too, so we probably get a better rate, including all of them in one insurance policy.
Yeah. And the Loda is also provided to the sheriff's deputies as well, so it's not just fire medics. But if you requested us to take a look at that, now that would impact the comments that you made at the 28th of March board meeting, wanting us to look at adding the deputies and some additional fire medics.
I'd be interested in hearing Sheriff Walton's comments on that, and certainly Chief Nunley, but that's always been my position, is that we seriously look at those manpower positions.
Well, not, not speaking for him, of course. I have talked to him at great length, and he went back and looked at 2008 when we had the recession. And we're at at least a recession now, even if it's temporary. Crime rate increased, our jail increased. So that, it's, it's a tough one to play. Yeah, it'd be nice to save that money, but I don't know, we may get hit harder later on. I mean, I'd like to go with the FY20 budget and see how it goes and adjust later is, is how I'd like to look at it. I hear you're saying we still need some reductions, and do you think staff can go back and find those, I guess, specifically, that I guess in prioritize was more important?
Well, I think as you, you saw with that memo that I sent out, we run a very lean operation, and the biggest challenge that we have is that so much of our budget is fixed, debt service. I pretty much scrubbed the capital request down to what we have to have, which is the tough books. We have to have those. The match for the fire engine, if we get that, because that will save us hundreds of thousands of dollars. We can, we can look at scrubbing. I'd already planned on taking all of the training and travel budgets out of the departmental funds to be able to help pay for the deputies and the fire medics that y'all were talking about, also giving up the $75,000 out of my contingency to fund that as well. If we were to go back and actually look at what Versa, we could say there, we don't really have any positions that are going to be vacated anytime soon, so we don't really have an opportunity to freeze employment or to not backfill at this point. I don't have anybody that's made me aware that they're going to plan on leaving. But we could go back and try to level fund and still include maybe one fire medic and one deputy, and see if we could do that. But we would definitely have to tighten up and then hope that y'all can amend the budget in the middle of the year.
In, in those stones, with doing this one week, we, because they probably can't put, to be honest, put two through the academy in that many a time, and we're not getting, and I, I don't know about fire, well, I don't think she hires any non-qualified firefighters.
That's correct. That's a commitment to me.
But the deputies many times, and right now, getting those certified, if you don't know, the academy is closed. So the ones that were in the academy came home.
Wow.
So we finally did get in service back online, but it's, it's, the whole world has changed, there's everybody in here that, and I don't like it, but I can't do a whole lot about some of them. But that's worth getting a couple through the academy to help if things go really bad. I think it's gonna be tough to do, but maybe we can reduce down the volume, at least at this point, for each. Sheriff is on Zoom. Can you unmute your microphone, Sheriff? Do you have any comments that you could give us, maybe?
All right, can you hear me?
Yeah.
So is a question about LODO? I'm not sure where you, where you want the question.
Both of them would be good, LODO for the first question, and then the second one, if you could handle just one additional deputy at this time.
Sure. The, the LODO benefit, and Bobby may know more about that than I, I thought that was a mandated thing for the sheriff's deputies to have by the comp board. I'm not sure about that.
It is, yes.
What's that?
It is.
Okay, okay. So, so there's not a lot we can do about that. The deputy sheriff's positions, you know, you know, you guys, I've asked for new deputies every year for the last three or four years now. We are growing, contrary to what many people think. Our call for service has increased. Right now, our biggest concern is our court days. We are, we're experiencing one more court days with present time, not, not, present time, not a part of that, but as we go forward, the number of courts we're holding a week, so I need, I need at least one deputy to handle that, preferably two, but I, I can go with one deputy, just, just so I can have for courts.
Thank you.
And I'm talking about a full-time deputy, not a part-time.
Correct, yes.
Sheriff Walton, traditionally, the, the court officers, they are part-time though, aren't they?
A majority of my court officers are part-time. I have one full-time.
That's, that's what I thought. Okay, thanks.
And since that has been brought up, Sheriff, remind me, are they not paid out of fines?
Well, there, there are fines and costs of the court that goes to courthouse security, which is to be used for some of that. I, I'm not sure where it goes once it goes into the county coffers and how that's distributed. One thing to think about, the General Assembly approved this year, and I think the governor signed that, is to increase that bill from $10, that fee from $10 to $20, but the, the board would have to adopt that into a resolution to go forward, but that would increase their money coming in for court security.
I mean, in the revised budget, what, what number of deputies and fire medics did you land?
I included two deputies and two fire medics, and that was scrubbing all of the training and travel that was giving up the contingency fund. That was also anticipating some reduction, even if it's just $50,000 from Hanover on the radio support system, and then looking to scrub anything that we could, that we could put off, to come up with about $150,000, so.
Bobby, what would Bill's, Bill's recommendation save us?
Oh, going to one and one?
Yeah.
That would probably drop us to around, well, I say that, I, my first number was wrong. It was closer to $200,000 for four, so we'd drop this closer to about $100,000, because some of the benefits were already built in. And what happens is that, the, the challenge about the budget is that we don't, we have to project out what the health coverage is going to cost us each year because people don't make their elections until May. So the budget is pretty much approved before the elections are made. This past year, we found a lot of people fell off. We don't cover all of our employees because they have resources elsewhere. So we had gone ahead and incorporated those benefits in, and I just chose to leave those just in case. So we're talking, you know, about $100,000 or so would be a savings if we just went to one to one.
Sheriff Walton, is that something you could live with?
Sure, I could live with that. It, it makes it difficult for us to operate that the, the second deputy, you know, going forward was going to assist with investigations, which we're starting to see a large increase in investigations because of just the times itself. Can we make it work? Sure. I'll come back to you next year to ask you for another position, but we can make it work.
Yeah, it's just, you know, with the hard times that we're having now, and they could get worse.
I certainly understand that, I, I really do.
Yeah. I mean, that's, that's up to everybody, but that's kind of where I'm at.
I think everyone realizes that these positions are not typical employees. These are high-pressure, high-demand positions, and it's gonna be, I think it's gonna start to wear and tear on some before too, if this continues. I want to prepare for it.
Yeah, my, my hope would be that we would come back next year, and we're, you know, again, like we said with schools, we're, we're back to work and fully recovered, and then we can, we can feel good about funding these positions, but, you know, just kind of where I am here, where I am in, in private sector even right now, we are, I mean, I'm ordering one oil filter at a time. That's, that's how we're operating right now. And we've still got work, you know, coming up, but we just don't know how long it's gonna last. So, you know, we could be back here in three months saying we've got to, we've got to cut back more. That's a horrifying situation. I hope that's not where we are, but I think we need to probably go forward with the idea of planning for the absolute worst and hoping for the best. I think that's, that's, that's gotta be our MO until we get a clearer picture of what, where we get from June to December, which I think is the big, you know, we know where we are until June. We're here, we're locked down, nobody's working, you know, revenues are, are coming in at a triple, and, and that's where we're gonna be for the rest of this fiscal year, hopefully. You know, by the end of June, things are, things are turning around, but if they're not, if we're doing this, or, or say we, say we try to open back up, and then come October, November, we're right back in the same situation, and we end up doing kind of a, a double dip in this, that could make things worse too, so I think we just gotta plan, plan for all the worst-case scenarios and try to put ourselves in the best situation to weather that storm, keep everybody as whole as we can, and then hope.
If we do that, take one away from sheriff, one away from fire and rescue, and cut the train like this test nervous suggested just for right now.
Well, I think that's kind of what we're, what we're settling on right now.
Would that come up with a $200,000? The training for fire, yeah.
Correct.
Not for fire, no. Well, that's already been cut, hasn't it? I think you said it was cut.
I tried not to, I consider law enforcement and fire and medics to be critical, so I tried not to take all of their training. Now, Chief Nunley has committed to you that she will hire fully certified fire medics, so there really isn't a need to be sending them off for trainings. Law enforcement, though, is different, but a lot of the, like, in my area, Olivia is working on her deputy clerk certification, cut that, cut commissioners, cut treasures, travel, finance, you name it. Those are the areas that I went to for the travel and training, things that can wait.
But you're, in law enforcement, I'm guessing in fire and EMS, that training has to be.
True, but, yeah.
If they open it back.
Yes, 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 and we will.
Right now, they, they are doing online with the law enforcement, but I don't know what fire is doing as far as keeping their certifications. I don't.
Yes, I, I don't know at this point, but, you know, if worst-case scenario, we can dig it out of both of their budgets in some form or fashion. So they'll just have to forego doing something else.
So do, are we good with what we just recommended? And come back and look at it? Hopefully, I'd rather go the other way, and then three months, we come back and add them back home, but I, I know what Travis is saying. I'm thinking in the fall, we're gonna get another surge, because we're not doing enough to stop it. That's just what I'm thinking, but hopefully, like you said, plan for the best, but I'm not seeing that. Not everybody's gonna listen, but the highways are a whole lot lighter than they used to be.
I can attest to that.
Yeah.
There are certainly people that are not driving anywhere right now.
Yeah, you go to the grocery store, they're all there.
It's fact.
So if I understand, you want us to go back and bring you a level FY20 budget that matches what we're in this year, instead of the recommended revised 21, and only one deputy and one fire medic? Is that what y'all are asking?
That's my thoughts.
That's, that's, I would agree with that.
Okay, you do realize that I will be having to cut some of the volunteer fire and rescue departments. I can't fund them at the full amount. I mean, you're talking almost $400,000, so they will have to take a percentage reduction, just like the schools did, just like the county is doing. Are y'all understanding that?
I, I have looked at it. I don't know, you would have to dramatically cut them to get $400,000.
Well, no, no, we fund them $400,000, $273 to West Point, $92,000 to Mangahick, and almost $40,000 to Walkerton. So that, just the operational cost, not the Loda or the radios, is $400,000, so I would have to do a percentage reduction to all three to be able to pull it back into this FY20 budget. So that's just the reality.
They're not level funding now, they're not level funding now in the new one.
They are level funded at the new, in the new one, in the 21.
I wouldn't do any less, because like I said, me, I don't really know.
We're gonna have to get to the number that we're asking for.
Yeah, I'm gonna be honest, and I know, I know, we've talked, and you don't agree with me, but I can't see us not cutting Station 1 if we've gotten all the other. I mean, I just.
But we can't cut Station 1, that's the problem.
Then how do we think that West Point and Mangahick and Walkerton can handle it?
Well, I, that's why I level funded them in the revised budget, because I didn't want them to give a cut, because I was trying to keep law enforcement and fire and EMS whole as much as possible.
So we're, we're, we're cutting back, you know, one, one staff position in law enforcement and one staff position in, in fire and EMS.
When, when you.
Yes, one me.
Well, yes, we're, yeah, well, nonetheless, though, it's still, it's still a reduction in the, in the revised budget, not this fiscal year, but the, but the coming fiscal year.
It's $100,000.
Well, sure, but I mean, you know, so again, hatchet or scalpel here, you know, we, we can, we can target some things, I think, and logically also leave things in there that are essential, okay? So, you know, we can limit it to two positions, get, you know, book some savings there into the coming year without, I don't know that we need to go in, and, well, again, we've got, most people saying that we don't want to reduce the, the volunteer organizations, right? So if we agree on that, then we need to agree that we're not gonna do it, and that we, we can't achieve the certain number, but we can target some things and try to get some, as much savings going forward as we can. So is that the method we want without?
It's, it's, it's a tough situation we're in, because, I mean, we have cut over the years so much that, you know, and, and thinned out everything. And I think Bobby and I said, we try not to do personnel, you know, but that's where we're headed.
And, and reality is, is that, you know, that will be where we go next, you know, if in three months we see a much more negative downturn, I know that is where we will go. And at that point, you know, my recommendation would be that we look at offering maybe some early retirement packages, because those are higher-paid individuals, and I will be honest, most of the, you know, you're probably talking maybe five or so that truly are at that 80 or so year mark for retirement. Their primary reason for sticking around is because they're not 65, and they can't get Medicare, and so.
And health care, bro.
So that, you know, a buyout might be something like, you know, we would just retain you on our health coverage until you are eligible to, or at cap it.
Would not help us this year, correct?
That really wouldn't help us this year, but it would alleviate their salary immediately. Then we could either freeze a position, or if we, it's, you know, essential, then we could bring someone in at the lower salary, which would save us some money. But there again, I think that capping or eliminating the annual leave and sick leave is, those are kind of unknown dollars that cost us every year, and, you know, I'll be honest, everybody else pays annual leave out, and some cap it, some do not, some pay sick leave out, some do not. With what we put in place for sick leave alone, though, I think that we should seriously consider that, because.
Where do we pay out in, not, not in numbers, but what percentage, 100%?
No, what it is, is, it depends upon the number of years. If you have. If you have been here five years or more, you get paid $2 per hour of sick leave. And then 10 years, it goes up to three, and then it kind of climbs up to five and caps at five. But some, you know, some of these sick leave payouts can be several thousands of dollars because you just continue to accumulate it if you don't use it.
Was the biggest one you've seen?
Oh, well, I mean.
State capped it at 5,000, have you ever seen one more than that?
Yes, I believe so.
I think we should put a cap, yeah.
Well, I, I, I think we should eliminate paying out.
There were two recommendations about it, which one was eliminate the sick leave payout and then cap any.
Right.
Because we offer short-term disability, long-term disability, and we have a sick leave pool. So no one is ever out of a paycheck if something medical occurs.
That's true, state got rid of ours years ago because if we don't use it every year, it's gone, you know?
So, you know, so what they would.
Maybe savings, or we have any idea?
Well, the sick leave alone would save us like 53,000 in payouts, but that's as people leave. The annual leave, if we were to cap it, remember, I think if we capped it, it would be around 32,000 just for the individuals that might be leaving over the next 12 months.
That's almost 100, and like 100 with the two positions, that's 200 right there on the, so we fiddled and got another.
Well, you know, probably getting rid of the sick leave would help us this year, but to what dollar amount, I don't know. The annual leave, though, that depends upon, again, people leaving, yeah.
Bobby, we're not actually talking about getting rid of it, we're just talking about not letting it, allowing it to roll over, correct?
The annual leave or the sick leave?
Sick leave.
Well, the sick leave, what I proposed is that everyone gets eight hours a month, and then they basically lose it at the end of December and get loaded again with the next year's.
Exactly, exactly, yeah.
What they currently have on the books now would just be wiped out, and they would not get to roll that forward or get paid for it. I mean, talking $50,000 in liability, that's a lot of money, and.
And Stephen, and, and Stephen, that's, that's similar to what the state does, correct?
Correct, yes, years ago, they got rid of it completely too because we had to switch it. We were voluntarily asked to do it to begin with, but then as time went on, it was mandatory. So now everybody, it's not no carryover anymore, it's use it or lose it.
When, when I was working, we had zero sick leave. You know, it was just time that you didn't get paid for, but, yeah. I'm in agreement with him.
The only negativity I, I see in that is that we're facing higher primaries. And the judge has already told me that we'll probably be doing nights and Saturdays out this year. So at what point can they take the leave? Of course, I'm sitting here thinking, you know, if they can't take it and then they wipe it out, I don't.
Well, that's not the annual leave, though.
It's just sick.
Why thought you were talking about both?
Sick leave would be, sick leave would be wiped out, annual leave would be capped. And my recommendation was just at the 10-year rate, but that's just my recommendation, just so that you have a hard number to see what the savings would be. I mean, you could cap it if whatever amount you want, say $10,000 or $5,000.
Could that not be waived if we get into a critical situation? I was looking yesterday, DOD is now like 60 days accrued is all you can carry over per year. They just extended that to 120 days yesterday. So I would suggest that we look at it quarterly as things progress and adjust it as necessary.
Well, also remember, though, people look at this as part of their retirement package, that they look at it as, I'm going to retire in X month, and I have this much annual leave, and that's gonna be an additional $10,000 check I get. So they truly do look at it that way. And if you talk to some time people, they will tell you that. So, you know.
Yeah, that, that would be an, an incentive for somebody to, that was on the cusp of retirement to, to get out before the cutoff, that's my opinion.
My only concern with the quarterly, and I do understand that reasoning, is that it may not give people enough time because it takes a good three months to file for your, uh, be a rest retirement, a good three months, so.
And the state also does that, we're capped at 265 hours a year. And a lot of our people, especially in IT, they lose it. So it's, it's just.
So if I told you to go forward with your recommendation, when would you plan on institute?
I would, this is staple, I had put in here September, but I would say probably July 1st. And if someone has put in their retirement papers by July 1st, then they could be grandfathered. But after that, it would go into effect for everyone. How would that sound?
Can the cleaner fiscal year start?
I think July 1st is good, that's the beginning of the fiscal year. I think that's a good date.
And you're okay with the grandfathering in if they filed their, they can show that they've truly filed for their retirement package?
At least going towards where we're, if we're trying to reduce staff, right?
Yes, and, you know, you probably will see some of the higher-paid staff leave. And there's probably two positions that we would not backfill. In that situation, there are probably at least three that we would have to. They are considered essential for the function of the department they're in. So, you know, there, there would be some short-term savings and some long-term savings.
Your gut feel, is this a, public services would be delayed or the critical knowledge that these people have accrued will severely impact?
Well.
I'm sure it's a mixture of both, but.
I don't believe so. I think that the services, as long as we could backfill the essential positions, would be, they would continue and public would be served. Remind me of the first part of that question, sorry.
Well, then, when they're, when, when losing the experience be to the detriment of the delivery officer?
Well, there is one situation where that is true. But I have already put into works over the last three months, someone working with that individual to document all of that so that when and if they leave, we will not feel the impact. So that's that one person that has me worried.
Plus, the new hires would, would not demand the, the salary of someone that has years and years of experience or employment with the county, I would, I would anticipate, correct?
Correct.
Sometime, right, sometime it happens, or people live.
Yes, yes.
All right, so we're, some of that is sort of if, you know, what we're gonna get as far as the reduction, you know, retirements, so where are we at financially, I guess?
Oh, I did want to mention, so if we were gonna do that, we gotta consider, we have Sands Anderson now. And really, we're looking at probably a shortfall in even in this year's budget of like maybe 162,000.
Just said that one line.
Yeah, well, so what I was trying to do is actually the 200,000 that we're, you know, a little off from getting to, back to 20s is Sands Anderson, we're like 162,000. The additional properties that we purchased, 360, Station One, the expenses just for the overhead, we're looking at maybe 76,000 where we're not gonna end VIPS up. We committed that 26,000, and then they did increase theirs by 23 this year too. Farley, we have to fill with that, so we're, 287 is where I'm at, where is what we need to get back to for 2020. But those are things that I don't know how we could reduce with Sands Anderson and.
Well, one of the areas that we're gonna reduce with Sands Anderson is that our procurement manual requires that any contracts, 25,000 and over, be reviewed by the county attorney. We're checking into code to see if that's accurate because that is eating us alive. If it's not in code, and we can go up to a $50,000 range, that will save us a lot of money. But the majority of Sands Anderson's work is commissioner of revenue and planning and zoning.
Always planning, yeah.
But commissioner of revenue is, is probably 50% of the budget.
It is, I, I've done some numbers, it's 43% of what we've been paying.
Yes.
And it's two cases that just don't seem to want to go away.
Right, one of them, in my opinion, is a valid, it deals with one of the properties disputing what their assessment is. And since there's gonna be another property that's very similar to it, I think that that is something that we need to dig our heels in on and bite. The other one is a topic that I think is superfluous and is costing us thousands and thousands of dollars every month that we need to just put to bed. You know, planning and zoning, those are, to me, critical. We have to have legal representation for those. But I would love to see commissioner of revenue reduce her usage of our county attorney.
Is it legal issues going on present without saying who or what?
Yes, most of them you're familiar with from closed session when Dan Stuck was here, when it came to planning and zoning, those individuals. So, you know, yes, we do have some overruns in certain areas in this fiscal year budget, but we also have expenditures that are going to be less, like the adult security center is gonna come in under what we projected, so that will offset. And then in the 21 budget, we actually did, you know, the revised budget, we did beef it up to cover those. But if you direct us to go back and bring you back a budget that is exactly the dollar amount for FY20, incorporate one new deputy, one new fire medic, and then let us look at where we can reduce, and then build in the reduction for, you know, the sick leave, take that off the table, and then say cap the payout for the annual leave. You know, we may be able to hit that target, but everybody will take it, everybody.
Is that, is that something that we can do without affecting the West Point, Mango Hick, and Waukerton volunteer fire departments? Are we still looking at maybe having to do something there?
I will do my best not to. If I do have to hit them for, say, 5% or 10%, I will look at the county as well. Fire and EMS department for the county as well, which would probably come out of the part-time pay line. And, you know, as I said, you know, the health coverage, we really don't know what we're facing with who is going to elect to utilize our health coverage until May, which is after the, the, so we kind of overestimate a little bit because we are going off of what we currently have and then new employees that have come in over the year. Majority, thankfully, the majority of our health coverage users select the 500 plan, the single option, which is wonderful because when you get into these other, the higher the family plus ones, that's when your costs dramatically go up.
Yeah.
We have like 60-plus that are the single option. And y'all save money on me because I have tricare. I have never used the health coverage. But I think maybe between.
Good luck.
Yeah, we can't take that cut.
Well, I'm worried now because I only bumped up the salary for the county administrator to 125,000, but I have a feeling that.
That was another thing, and so here, all right, again, we just talked about hatchet or, you know, or scalpel here. I, I think what we need to be doing is targeting areas rather than saying we want to hit that last year's budget number. I think the revised budget got us in a, in a pretty good position, and we can, you know, revise it downward as much as we can, but I don't know that we need to be just pounding everything 5% cuts because, again, I don't think volunteer organizations are gonna be able to absorb a, a, a big reduction. There's other things that we just can't reduce. And I just, you know, look at this, this, you know, we talked the other night about the range for the new, you know, administrative recruitment. And, you know, we need to make sure that's built in, you know, if we end up having to go to the top of that range, so. It doesn't sound like it is, essentially, these are things that we need to, that we need to consider. I didn't realize that was gone.
He had a teleconference he got.
Y'all were clear.
If it is, if that's gonna step out, I feel that we should, we should.
Is it almost 6:00? He said he had a help meeting, had to take, so it was keep going, he said, don't worry about it.
He said.
He had to take.
Okay.
I'm gonna talk about anything, I asked him if he wanted us to bring anything up, he didn't have anything specific, so. We can keep going.
And I, I definitely do not want to stop it completely, but what if we froze the development of the properties we own? How much is that really, I know we're doing a lot of the work in there, so is it a lot of money at all?
Well, 100,000 was going to be a reimbursement from the state, which was for social services. But 30,000 was gonna come out of the proper cash. I mean, I pretty much had just kind of decided to put that on hold until better times. If the building gets cleaned out, now the front area where the sheriff's satellite office would be, that, that's as clean as it comes. I mean, the, the dentist took a mack of the care of that property. So they actually could utilize that. And, you know, we are already looking at working with Atlantic Broadband to get the line run so that, that we can have the connections. But as far as where the social services, we can just put that on hold because one, once again, I haven't checked with Ms. Mitchell, but I don't want to do work if we're not gonna get reimbursed.
She seems to be online too, does she, would she know, or?
You could ask them.
Anne, I see, I see you're on Zoom, could you turn on your microphone?
Uh, yes.
Have you heard, could we still get those funds, or is everything put on hold?
I've not heard that they have been frozen. I can ask, I can ask. I'll be glad to send out an email and try to get a reply by the end of the day.
Well, I guess another question I have, if we freeze it, does it affect it also?
Well, here's the thing, if the money's coming from the state and then from proper cash, it's not operational. So, you know, we wouldn't.
Wouldn't matter.
We wouldn't really be banking anything against it.
So is there need to stop it?
Yes.
And that, that 100,000 has a, what is it, a $15,000 county match? Or, or, or how, how did that go?
15%, 15.5%.
Oh, 15.5%. So in other words, in, in order for us to get to 100,000, the county would have to come up with 15,5? Is, is that the way it works?
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay. So Bobby, are, are they the numbers that we're talking about still?
Yes.
Or we were talking about, they are, okay.
Uh, the 100,000 from the state and then 30,000 from proper.
Okay.
Thing is, though, is that, you know, I had had hopes that we would be able to put more money into it, you know, like redo the parking lot and stuff, but the 100,000 would have to cover everything for social services.
Yeah, yeah, if I remember correctly, with the building inspection, that building, the, the heating and air conditioning system was also dated. And I think it was a small leak in the roof, the, the shingles were all, you know, it was already a double-shingled roof on that building too. That would be a major expense, the re-roofing.
Well, Mr. Garber, the thing is, is that we do have HVAC money in the capital fund that we fund every year and then some roof initiatives, so those would be covered through other capital funds. Basically, the money from the social services reimbursement would be for architectural construction, things like that, and the security that would be needed. But, you know, asphalting the parking lot and the roof, HVAC would be done through other capital sources. Then our, uh, our facilities department has gone in and already stripped out the, the building, and then, of course, all of the metal that was left, we've taken it and had it, we took it and sold it. And put that back into the cost of the construction for the building. We're very industrious.
Yeah.
All right, guys. So so far I've got that we want to, you know, eliminate one deputy from the revised budget, eliminate one EMS position from the revised budget, instruct Bobby to move ahead with her recommendations on second annual leave. Other initiatives, we want to keep the volunteer organizations intact without any reductions there. I have reduced legal use, but that's... And that's what I've got so far, is directives. Is that... Am I missing anything?
In dealing with the legal, I know it's more money, but I'm more impressed with what we got today than what we get.
Bobby, you mentioned to raise the cap from twenty-five thousand to fifty thousand for the county attorney to review.
Correct.
What would, what would we have to do to do that? A resolution or what?
We have a procurement policies and procedures manual, and I have asked our fiscal specialist who deals with that to come in and revise it because there are just some things that need to be revised periodically. We're going to make sure that in statute that we have that ability, but we would just bring it to you and then as a resolution, you would just adopt the change. Because we, they do, because Sands Anderson does not just review the contract. They go back and look at the RFP and the posting and everything else, and we are trained in doing all of that. Our, Ms. Mills has gone through all of the state training. I have gone through all of the state training on procurement. We follow the state guidelines for procurement, and the way that Dan Stuck set up our procurement manual is almost identical to what the state requires. So we're very strict. And so having our county attorney go back and review everything that we know is already accurate is kind of needless. So...
All y'all guys, go ahead.
Well, it's just that I think that would save us some money. It's not going to save us, you know, it may save us fifteen thousand a year.
Another thing we had mentioned, Travis, you didn't, I didn't hear you talk about was training, administrative training. We can't get rid of fire rescue deputies. Maybe we could get rid of some non-essential administrative training. I don't know if you've got that on your list. I don't know if we need help. You mentioned something about it.
Well, I'd already taken that to help pay for it, so...
Okay. Maybe we should move on. We're getting way behind schedule already. Do we want to move to financial services, information technology? That would be section three, pages three to four.
Y'all guys are talking too much.
For the finance department, you'll see the increase in that department due to, we are moving the special projects salary into my department. She is actually working more with the implementation of Edmunds and the assessors package and working with the general ledger. She assists me with a lot of making sure things are going to be, the data validation with the systems that's going to be key to this. So we're actually removing her into my department. And with that, we'd actually have, anytime we have someone that has a family plan, we always got to think around twenty thousand dollars for health insurance. We'll increase that department too. So if you take that into account, plus we, if we go ahead with this, removing the sick leave policy, we wanted to put in place a long-term disability program for the non-hybrid employees, and that we would, the finance department is going to take hit for that too, which is roughly around thirteen thousand dollars. So that is the increase for us.
Any questions on that section?
Hey, Olivia, I got disconnected. I'm trying to reconnect.
I guess the next section is legal services, section three, page five. I think we just...
Yeah.
I think we just, I know a lot of ways I already have, so I'll just skip over that because I mentioned you were going to, okay, yeah. Next one is assessors office, just like it was removed. Is that...
Yes, I had to completely remove that commitment. But there again, I think that I have talked with you about trying to do a reassessment every two years. Bright Minds, since we were there first, they are very amenable to continuing to work with us. And one of the cost-cutting measures that they have requested us to utilize would be using drones. Of course, I was a little leery at first, but they assured me that they have done this in the past and that, you know, there would be massive education, notification, you know, certain areas of the county would be. And I said, okay, fine. I said, because if I don't know and somebody's drone flies over my property, I'll probably shoot it down, you know, as a county administrator. So I said, it would be, you know, but it would be probably about a three to four dollar savings per parcel to utilize drones where possible. So Bright Minds is very amenable to continuing to work with us. But I do think, though, that we should probably look at going to a two-year reassessment or if we can just go back to the four-year, whichever the board decides, but that will come to y'all later. So that is why...
Certainly, we don't want to stick on the six-year. I'm just trying to, trying to get...
We were wrong in the beginning. We were in a period that wasn't even allowed.
Yeah, when you and I got there, it was three years, which is the only period not allowed. We immediately fixed that, but then we, you know, we delayed it trying to get the in-house successor. After being unsuccessful with that, went this route. So certainly, yeah, we would want to go on at a minimum of four, at the earliest two percent.
I think right now the net should be two because we don't know where we're going right now. And what their values of things are going to be. I think it might be a little bit higher right now when they come out with the...
It could be, but what was amazing to me is the amount of cleanup, amount of property that was not on the tax roll. That was very disturbing, very disturbing.
It wouldn't, it wouldn't, it was not shocking to me because I found several properties, one was a seven-thousand-square-foot property that was, had been overlooked on the...
Yeah. So I think that once we get through this reassessment, we're going to have a much cleaner database. And so, and that's one of the reasons Emily Teble is the special projects person in finance because she came out of the Commissioner of Revenue's office and she is amazing, absolutely amazing. And she completely understands all of that assessment, you name it.
Something like that, all in-house. I think that's what Travis now, so one of the, because we didn't have any control over it when it was outside. Now we've got the records and it may be a lot easier to update than having to start everything over every time together in companies.
Well, Emily has also built an amazing relationship with the town of West Point. And the fact that there were a lot of times I did not feel like they were getting, they would send information up and it wouldn't be in a timely manner. So they work directly with Emily on all new construction down in the town. And so that's being addressed very promptly now.
I received those same complaints, so I agree with it.
Next section we have is Commissioner of Revenue, section three, page six.
All right. I have a question. On utilities, I guess communications, they're abbreviated rentals, they were fifty-fifty. And the twenty-one was supposed to ten thousand, nine fifty-four, not still on the rank freshman day?
But that may have something to do with the assessment. I don't know, but...
It's page six. So your microphone's off. You want to turn your microphone off now?
Data maintenance.
My question, Sally, was on the utilities, communications, rentals, it went from fifty-fifty to ten thousand, nine hundred and fifty-four?
No, I didn't request that. I don't know what that is.
That's probably, it probably doesn't belong in that bucket.
No, that's bright. Isn't that just, you're allocating bright in all of those other charges? Because it's data processing, maintenance, and licenses is where the, you move things into.
Yeah, I do see the difference this year is the seventy-eight hundred for bright tech, maintenance, ESD support.
Right. So all of the maintenance and licenses plus allocated bright wound up increasing that. Because that's one thing that Natasha wanted to do was impact each of the budgets for their share of the cost of the bright software and maintenance.
Based on number of users.
Thanks, Sally. Next item we have is treasures, section three, page seven.
And what you see with the treasurer is, the impact is the classification and compensation review. One of the individuals in there received an increase because of that. And that then also impacted all of the benefits that were related to that position.
I've got a question. The same category that Bill spoke of with the commissioner?
That would be the same.
The treasurer has seen a pretty drastic drop in that same category.
Yes, because what we did was actually, some of the departments were being charged more than what they should have been.
Okay.
From the breakdown of the bills, yeah.
So it's more, the wage department uses it, it's more spread out how they use the system.
Correct, yeah.
There was also related to the credit card fee cost. It had been higher than it should have been, and then the finance department contacted the bank and renegotiated a rate.
All right, thank you.
To the county.
One question, the rate that we charge taxpayers when they pay their credit card, what is, what is that office charging them right now?
Two point, I think it's two point five-nine or two point...
Is it three percent?
Percentage is supposed to apply now?
The percentage.
Okay. They're charging some really high flat fee for a long time there.
If they do that at the office, at the counter, that's the rate the county is charging to cover our merchant fees.
Sure, I understand that. But they, one time they adopted like a ten or a fifteen-dollar flat fee for it.
Now, if they do official payments and if they, online, there are, there are flat fees associated to that, yeah. And that's based on the use...
Not with official payments. Official payments is a heavy percentage, not pay.
Well, web services then. There's three ways to process payment. I was talking to Maria about it yesterday, actually. And web, I think it's web services, it's a flat fee, business, parks.
Official payments is awful. I pay over fifty, sixty dollars for real estate, twenty, thirty dollars for personal property. It's like three percent of the charge.
Yes, and what that is, is what, that is their fees. We don't see any of that. That's what they charge to cover their service, yes.
That's nice to know.
Yeah, I mean, it's somewhere between two and three percent. That's probably just the merchant.
Yeah.
Is that their only reimbursement for doing the service or does the county also pay?
No, not pay.
Excuse me?
No, they do not. No, they didn't.
Okay, okay.
Well, my point was that we should really only be seeking to recover costs there. You know, there was a period at which that fee that had been adopted was, I was getting points about, so higher, yeah.
That's something we're working with Edmunds too, to make sure that we maintain that within use.
Next section we have is Board of Elections and General Register, page eight, nine.
Under the electoral board, salaries and wages went up. The general registrar has requested some additional part-time funding for the elections that she's trying to figure out how now to handle. Probably what a lot of that money will be is probably pushed down to mailings at this point. Whereas if things were normal, she would be paying electoral reps. And when you get to the registrar's budget, there has been an increase in the fact that under the employee benefits, both general registrar and her assistant have the family plan.
That's a big difference.
I'm sure it's minimal, but to mail a lead eligible for the special class of mail...
She has a dollar, a dollar eight is what she can get for the bulk rate. That's all she's worked, that's what she can get.
A dollar eight?
Yeah, a dollar eight. To mail out each individual item that we send out, yeah.
Instead of the normal fifty-five cents?
Yes, because of the, I think it's registered or certified or something like that. That's based on what she, you know, the requirements from the state also. Because we have talked about even using the company that Mr. Witt uses to send out his bills because they have that better bulk rate, but we can't do that.
Allison said she can weigh in on the mailing cost if you'd like.
Sure. Yes, Allison.
Allison, can you hear us?
Looks like their speaker's on, but... Allison?
Oh, she says she doesn't have a mic.
She's typing in the chat here.
Oh, yeah.
She doesn't have a mic.
Okay, we got you, Allison.
Don't have a mic, okay. I didn't see that either.
Now you did it. You opened the door, Allison.
She says the mail for normal mailing is sixty-five cents and then an additional forty-three cents for certificate of mailing. Any questions for her? Okay, question for both of them. If we mail three or more, it comes to one oh eight a piece of mail and a dollar fifty for less than three at a time.
I made the post office that is not in a negotiating mood right now.
Hopefully they'll still be available.
Right, yeah. So they're ready. It'll be mailed by mail if that started out.
And the workload is still susceptible to how the governor allows absentee voting, early voting, all the other types of voting, I would assume.
Every summer there's mailings they have to still go out even absentee.
Well, that's true. There's a lot of them certainly there, but certainly they've gone, you know, they've opened up more opportunities for absentee. Yeah, they got... I agree, Allison.
Allison says there are no excuse absentee voting going on in show effect for November as well as absentee by mail. The cost will go up drastically.
Practically, I don't think it's a bad thing, but obviously expense-wise, it's going to be a challenge, so.
Yeah, thanks, Allison. Anybody else?
Now, good luck, Allison. It's going to be a fun year for you in your first year.
I think we're into the next section, C, judicial administration and public safety, first section, county court system, pages ten and eleven.
All right. On the, Mr. Chair, on the general district court, materials and supplies doubled. Do you even have an idea why? It's not a whole lot, and I know a lot of people doing his nickel down, but a hundred percent increase in anything.
Who's section is that? You know, page eleven. I mean, whose section on, anybody online I could ask? Oh, whoa, I don't know.
There's somebody named Patricia on here, but I'm not sure.
Patricia. Patricia.
That's, yeah, but that's for the clerk.
Patricia, is that you? You'd be looking for Jill.
Yeah.
Oh, Jill. My guess is it's not new, biggie, but when you, a 100% increase, you're saying, there may be a logical reason for that. And I, I don't think we have either one of these. We don't have Ms. Carter on there either, dude. Would you, uh? And I had a question about the utilities, communications rentals went from 750 to
Well, the juvenile domestic, that's travel and training, went from 750 to 1,750.
Yeah.
And the same for general district.
For general district, for all the supplies, supplies not covered by Supreme Court.
I'm sorry, but I'm, Bobby's right. I made a wrong one. It's training, the travel went up a thousand dollars.
So, are we?
Materials and supplies?
For general district?
Yeah, it's juvenile domestic related.
Now, you got me, give me four questions. Hold on.
No, materials and supplies are the, is the same as, it's 600, this year, 600 recommended.
No, he saw my line, the general district court went up, and you said that was because of paper?
Supreme Court.
Yeah, Supreme Court not, not covering some of those costs.
Imagine that.
And then the same thing for travel, Supreme Court, for training and conferences not paid for by the Supreme Court, travel.
That was about right. That was a thousand each of them, yeah. Is that one of the trainings we're talking about earlier?
No, I did not look at these because general district and juvenile domestic are regional, and they split the cost up. And then the circuit court, that is something that Patricia Norman prepares, and that is basically the jurors and then support for the judges.
You know, the circuit, I did, I did highlight that, that the material and supplies went up about 44, and maybe it's another Supreme Court, not evidence.
So, on the circuit court, what I did is they had requested pretty much level funding for FY '20, which was 30,000, 340, and I reduced it to 27,275. And I hit where they had the purchase services, which is the jurors, because then I went back and looked at the And then on the general district court, it was an increase of about $575, and their majority of that was in the materials and supplies. And then the juvenile domestic relations was an increase of around $1,000, and that was in the travel and training area.
Any questions on that section? Next session, clerk of the court, circuit court, page 12.
In this department, you're going to see an increase in the personnel and the benefits. They've had a complete changeover in staff. And of course, those individuals also are electing the family plan. But this is the one department besides the sheriff's office coming in second that actually collects as much as they possibly can from the compensation board for reimbursement. So, they're paying out 210,000, and they're receiving 198,000 And the materials and supplies is up because there was a one-time request for, Patricia has asked the last two years for any filing system. And if you have been in her area, they are in dire need of a true structured filing system. What they have is the old timey, you know, lateral, not lateral, not even lateral drawer ones from the 60s and 70s and 80s. And I believe there's a grant that's going to pay half of it.
Yes.
And so, we're looking at about 9,100 as our share. And she's been extremely patient, but she is out of space, period. And they need to get, with the new staff they have in, two of the new staff, I think, have paralegal backgrounds, knew exactly what she needed. So, I think giving them what they need to do to work properly is a good idea.
All right, next item has Calum's attorney, section, page 13.
In this one, you'll see that there is a decrease, and predominantly that decrease is reflected in the employee benefits. One of the individuals ceased using the family coverage. So, that had a major impact to the budget line.
Question on, let's say this scenario where the spouse got a better job, with better health benefits, and moved out of Calum. Are they eligible to come back at any time in the future day? Do we know whether they're eligible?
Well, they are eligible to come back if they have a life-changing event. Say, if the spouse loses her job or retires. We do allow that, but it's only allowed, they can do that year-round, can't they?
Yes, they can. And then if it's not, if they do change to the employee, their wife or their husband, and they say, ah, you know what, I want to go ahead and switch back to the county, they would have to wait to open enrollment if that, if that.
That's possible, yeah?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Matt, I see you're online. Do you have anything to add?
Not really. I, I think, I, I'm just looking at the, the only thing I would change on here, and I looked at what I had requested, would be maybe to take the travel and training down, back down to 500 instead of 750. I think that was a little high in FY '19 because we had some, some special trainings, but I don't anticipate, I don't anticipate going over 500 this, this fiscal year. And so, I mean, that's 250 bucks, but it's 250 bucks.
Right, Allison, thank you for all.
Thank you, Matt. How you doing?
I'm good. How are you?
I am well.
One, one thing I do want to touch on, it is that right now, all, all cases are beaten, with the exception of people that are incarcerated, are pretty much being continued out into June and July. And so, our volume of work with regard to that, courtroom work, I should say, is going to probably exponentially increase after we are clear to have more court, which means there's probably going to be more court. I know you all are planning out three months at a time, but that's something you all probably need to be aware of, is that all the courts are going to be jammed scheduling-wise, probably for the rest of this, of this calendar year, once, once whatever we're doing clears up a little bit.
That's what the judge said.
Yeah.
It might not clear out.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Matt. Next item, we have county sheriff's office. They may have looked at them already, but with any questions on that section? Let's see, sheriff is still here yet?
The major change that you're going to see on this is that classification and compensation study that we did, that impacted predominantly law enforcement and fire medics. And so, you'll see that the salaries and wages has gone up. Also, I think the sheriff asked for some additional funding for the security deputies as well. And so, that's pretty much what it is. And then, of course, the employee benefits, like I said, a lot of the individuals that we have, they select the single 500 plan, which is a lot less than the family plans. And every year, that changes.
Does it include, yeah, anything else? The funds that we get from the courts, are they more than what we're spending? Are they?
I would say they're less, but they are.
Is that on the bottom, isn't it?
Yeah, but.
Isn't that on the bottom? They can be hit in 775,000, is that not?
That comes from the compensation board.
Okay.
For reimbursement for staff. But no, I think that what we receive in security is less than what's expended on the staff for that, but we know that it's not going to be one-for-one. There's a lot of revenues that come in that just support, just like the comp board, it just supports what we expend. But it is, what is the security, it's 40-some odd thousand? Is it a fat match?
For security at the court? We're just talking about salaries only?
No, I'm talking about the revenue that comes in that gets charged.
Oh, okay. For court costs, our revenue was 5200. That was sheriff's fees, court appointed attorneys, blood testing, AP, jail admissions fee. That's what we get there. Court, courthouse security is 22,500.
Is that what we collected?
In '19, we collected 19,784. We budgeted to collect this year 22,500. And we have a courthouse maintenance that we received last, in '19, we received $5,000.
So, everything combines to just kind of offset, but it doesn't, it's not a one-for-one.
I didn't, I didn't hear the, figure the segment. And now, this, so, isn't that include the two new positions also? Is that?
No, that does not.
Any other questions on that section? All right, so, to the next sections, sheriff's office, end of the emergency communications, E91, section, page 15.
And the major change in that is the purchase services, and that has to do with the maintenance license on the CAD system. It's around 90,000 now, Natasha, I think. It's with the system that we implemented about two to three years ago. And it's just that annual maintenance cost, it's going to go up every year. They did have some changeover in personnel, so you see that salaries did drop a little bit. So, it's pretty much level funding for the department.
Yeah, and that's what actually went down almost about. All right, next section, correction and detention, page 18. Bobby, was that the 851 and 313, is that the recommended that we proposed by the Bureau?
They had requested 830.
I added 25,000 to what they requested.
I'm good with that. I think it's going to increase as well.
Yeah, typically we do add 50, but this year, you know, we did what we could and just dropped it back to 25.
And hopefully that didn't get us.
What line are you on?
Page 18, it's the regional security centers, a limited basis, we talked about. We still had the juvenile detention.
Right.
Centers underneath that. They actually, looks like went up on pre-trial, what it going on?
Pre-trial.
Non-secure went, went up and, and the juvenile detention center, they're there.
Yes, the juvenile detention center, the Merrimack Center, remember, they went to that five-year average to help offset the cost of.
So, they can budget also.
Right. So, that actually went down because we had less people participating. At issue, though, is the non-secure juvenile facilities. You get one individual in it for months at a time even. That pretty much blows your budget. But we have a really good agreement with York County, is it York County? It's a facility in York, that we get a reduced cost per day if we buy a block of time. And so, that's what we've been doing.
But that, Bobby, that number could change dramatically, get dramatically worse, I guess. It's a possibility, isn't it?
It very much could. Yes, it could. These are areas that we always keep a very close eye on.
Yeah.
And probably what Natasha will do is if she sees the first two quarters coming in higher than anticipated, she'll probably be coming back to the board just to notify y'all and maybe just let you know where she may be pushing some money from to offset future costs.
And Stuart, since you're just coming on also, and I went here, we really got hit with it. Did we not get a $300,000 increase in one year in '08, '09, somewhere in that area?
2018, we had 200,000 dollars.
I don't know about '08 or '09. I can tell you the 2013 or 2014, definitely.
And we reduced them, and then we got hit with over 200.
We reduced them, and then the bill came in more than the previous year.
Yeah, way more.
Yeah, that's, that's kind of what I thought.
Yeah.
So, recommending a reduction in it?
Yeah, it could go either way.
Is that on?
No, we're not recommending a reduction. What the security center stated is that they were projecting 831,000 or 825,000.
Okay, so that's based on their production, your building.
Yes, and then we built in another 25,000.
It's 850.
Yeah.
It's just a little less.
Well, I was just looking to be adopted, as the recommendation, but the recommendation's based on their production plus contingency, that that's all we can do.
Anybody else? Next section, we have sheriff's office, animal control, page 21.
And gentlemen, what you will see in this is that the increase is built into the salaries and wages because these two positions are considered deputies, and so, they were, they benefited from the classification and compensation review. And both of the individuals that have been in the position, the one has left now, were utilizing the family plan.
Bobby, is this part of the cost, cost share for the animal shelter with King and Queen?
No.
Or do they not, they don't, they don't participate in this part of it?
No, sir, they don't. This is strictly out of the sheriff's budget.
Okay.
For those salaries, but for the shelter, it's shared, correct?
Yeah, yeah, I know the shelter. I was just wondering about this. Thank you.
You can't see us, Stuart.
No, the animal shelter is funded separately from this, from the animal control. Animal control is part of the sheriff's office.
That was your animal control.
Okay.
I, I know, I know exactly what you're talking about.
Just for clarification, so these animal control officers are fully deputized and full authority, are they regular, regular as a deputy?
I could, I could probably answer that, but I'm really sure when it on that, be more accurate.
Bill, I can tell you that I was stopped by an animal control officer one day because I had a tail laid out. So, I'm thinking, yes.
They had two deer in the truck.
Simple answer is yes, they are sworn deputy sheriffs. One, one of the animal officers is scheduled to go to the academy to do the law enforcement part in July.
Okay.
We hope.
But Bill, just so you know, I was not written a ticket, so, that's good.
I have to rethink that one, Stuart.
Yeah.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Yes.
Thank you, Jeff.
Yes, sir.
Anything else? Next section, we have emergency medical services billing, page 37.
Last year, we thought we, you can see there's a huge difference in what we're requesting. Last year, we, we thought we were going to do a lot better than what we did, honestly. We have actually, sub that out to cornerstone billing. We don't, we no longer bill in-house free MS billing. And I think last year, when the budget was presented to, we were pulling free EMS billing, and I think last year when the budget was presented too, we were pulling that in-house, and we thought it was going to be beneficial for us, but it ended up turning out it was not. So right now, that's the reason, we're trying to be conservative with our numbers, we have talked to Cornerstone, Cornerstone about what they anticipate our revenues are going to be, and they feel good about the number that we have provided. I can say when we did that too in twenty, we assumed that we could actually cover some of our expenses for running those calls, so that's something we've done now, where we actually had to push that, those expenses that we thought we were going to be able to cover into firing EMS's operational from the general fund. So now what we're trying to do is just maybe possibly cover the fuel, you know, maintenance on the equipment, the ambulances, things like that. If it runs a call that we can revenue recovery, we're trying to recover that expense through this fund now.
We had a company when we first started, we used, we got rid of, is that the same company we're back with?
No, it's not, actually Cornerstone actually does West Point Volunteers billing too.
We were using the Northern NEPC initially, and that had some type of, I think we moved away from them because they had an unfavorable take rate, like seven and a half percent or something like that, and going through, I think we've used another third-party private company, we tried to bring it in-house, and now we're using this one, so, you know, hopefully they've found the right fit, but we've tried to find, you know, tried to improve it.
Yeah, I think a lot of people think, you know, that we bring in a lot of money for the, we run a lot of calls, and that's not the problem. It's just, private pay is not collectible, I mean, so a lot of that is part of the problem. Insurance, we get adjustments from insurance companies, and that was something that was hard for us to have one person in our building keep being track of, you know, HIPAA and this and that, and the adjustments that were going on. Now, this company, Cornerstone, takes care of all of that, Medicare, Medicaid, all of that, and it, it's so much smoother for us. We get a report, we can see true numbers, what the adjustments were, we don't have to worry about write-offs.
I think Travis and I, we're on the board, and we changed, although we were under the pressure, we were losing a lot because it wasn't being administered correctly, and then we thought we could do better in-house, but I guess, like you said, it wasn't the case. Thought we were losing a lot because it wasn't, information wasn't getting sent in, like you said, this company's handling everything.
They work hand-in-hand with firing EMS, making sure that, you know, every little box is checked, to make sure that that bill goes out, if we can.
Since West Point uses them, we're all together, right.
Yeah.
In one thing, private pay is collectible, but we elected to do pass correct, as far as I understand.
They are citizens of the county.
If they pay, we accept it, if they don't pay, we don't take it.
And that's how all the counties are doing it, so.
Proclarification again, Station Two in West Point, do they bill their own?
Yes, we do not.
Do you not see any of that?
No.
And that's what, they're recovering it for the calls that they run, we're recovering the calls that we run for our station. Mangahick has their own.
Yes, they do their own as well.
We're not collecting for Mangahick either.
No.
So.
Do we see if they're collecting?
So this is all Station One?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
You will see what they are collecting because we require that each of the volunteer organizations submit their IRS 990 to be able to qualify for funding each year, and if you go and look through that, you can have a general idea of what they do collect from outside entities. But do we ask for any kind of reports? No, we do not.
And for the most part, that's the only other real source of revenue for those stations outside of what we give. You know, fund, they don't collect a lot of fundraisers, you know, like it was thirty, forty years ago.
They should all lay there.
Yeah, that's primarily how they raise any other funds that they need above and beyond what we give them, which is, they always do, that's how they make that up.
That, oh, that's proven here, that amount of money collected via fundraising in the past is not visible, or it's only nine ninety?
It is reflected on the nine ninety, yeah. But remember that for the two twenty, well, the fiscal year twenty-one budget, we received the two thousand and eighteen IRS nine ninety, so you're always, you know, looking back at the collections.
Anything else? Okay, next section, last section, C, we have Fire and Emergency Medical Services, moving back to page sixteen and seventeen. Let's see, Laura's back.
Just like we were just now talking about, the part of the increase in her department is because we had to move some of those expenses that we had budgeted in fine two forty into fine one hundred. Do you guys have any questions specifically about her?
It'd be interesting to hear where we are as of April seventeen, as far as manpower.
Laura, did you hear that?
Given the, given the takeback from Harold and Caroline and whatnot.
I'm sorry, I did not, all I heard is where we are as of April seventeenth, but I did not hear the topic.
As far as our manpower situation?
As of, it's the same as when I reported it the other night, we have not lost any of our other, excuse me, not volunteers, part-time staff, so we are still sitting with just Hanover and at a thirty percent deficit.
Okay, how many, how many personnel does that equate to?
That equates to seven total. Anytime.
Any other questions with the numbers?
And I did want to let you guys know about the, you know, when we fund King William Volunteer, oh, not King, West Point Volunteer, Mangahick, Manna, and I, Waukegan, all this, I did want to let you guys know, line of duty is not paid to them, we don't write them a check, we, 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 yes, we pay that through VRS, the same thing for the radio costs, we don't send them a check for that, that is something that we pay for them.
Does West Point Volunteer Fire and Rescue, do they have any full-time employees, or it seems like they have a whole lot more funding than, say, Mangahick?
I don't know.
So I don't know if they have any dedicated full-time employees, they have employees. I think the likelihood is that they are all part-time, including the chief, and what they do is they've got a roster of part-time employees, they fill out a schedule, and so for the most part, when West Point is staffed, it is staffed with paid personnel. They do a volunteer organization, but I think it operates for the most part as an auxiliary at this point like ours does, as most of the old.
They, they also get some funding from, from the town too, don't they?
Correct. That's right, and you'll see that we, in from the FY eighteen, FY nineteen, we increased that funding quite a bit, and that was because we were moving to a paid structure at King William, and we allocated more funding to them to cover more of their paid personnel costs, in recognition of the fact that, you know, beforehand we weren't doing that, but we also weren't paying any money at King William either, and they do cover up to, you know, Jim Hall's pretty much as their first due, and so that's a different portion of the county that they're also covering on a first due basis, so we want them ready to go.
Mangahick is all volunteer, correct?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay.
I pulled up Chief Bartos' narrative, and paid coverage to seven days a week, two people, five AM to five PM.
So just day-to-day, or pay to four?
Yeah, Mr. Garber, we had discussions with all of the chiefs back about twelve to eighteen months ago, when we offered to contribute funding for paid part-time. West Point is the only one that actually had the infrastructure to be able to take that and go with it, Mangahick elected to not do that because it would have meant quite a bit more responsibility on reporting, you know, social security and FICA and everything else, and they just didn't feel like they had the infrastructure to do that. Same with King William Volunteer when they were still in existence. So the same offer was made to all three, but West Point was the only one that took us up on it, and that's why you see that increase.
Yeah, Mangahick, straight up, and today you just cannot handle what we were asking for, you know, as far as the coverage for the increase in money.
But as a, as a, or Mr. Clark, we're not getting the level of coverage that is needed, expected, or designed, what are we going to do to fix it?
Well, the option, really only option is to start paying for it, you know, look at what we're paying to get the coverage in West Point, what we're paying to get the coverage in Aleut, if you want that coverage, and Mangahick, we're going to have to figure out a way to pay for it. You know, like I said, we offer an increase in money for them to bring on paid part-time staff, and staff, but it was turned down.
It was on the periphery of all of it, of course, but twelve eighteen months ago was a long time.
It's no doubt about that, the other thing is, is I think what you're headed for is career, it's not going to be paid part-time, because they could not get personnel for that, you go out and do benefits, you go out and do full salary.
Gentlemen, if, if I may just add, I have been in contact with them and talking to them all along, and that is correct. Right now, since the first of the year, they have covered only from five PM on Friday night to six AM on Saturday morning, they have not missed any of those weekend calls, however, they have no coverage during the week, it's spotty, and they will occasionally meet us and so forth. When we broke the numbers down last week, out of, since the first of January until the ninth of April, we had, King William ran two hundred and eighty-six calls, that would be Company One, in, in that period, and Mangahick was able to cover thirty-six calls in that period. So unfortunately, I don't think, I, I think that is correct, when we start looking at what we're going to do about that, it is going to have to be a career staff fix because there's just not enough volunteers, and then when we fall into a time like this, they only have four volunteers right now because people have pulled part-time, some of their volunteers are part-time employees elsewhere, we also have people who can't volunteer because they're not allowed to be volunteering with patient contact in the current situation that we're in, so when we face challenges like that, it makes it even more challenging.
And Laura, they're, they're not on board with any paid employees either, are they?
We have been talking about it, saying they're not on board is, I can tell you, when I came on, they were not on board, as we have had several conversations where we are talking about ways that we could do it that it might benefit both. So it is not going to be an easy transaction by any stretch of the imagination, but the door has been opened, so at least we are talking about it and can see where we can move so that we can get our citizens the best coverage out there. In the end, both Station Two and the personnel at Station One, that's all we want, is to make sure that we can get someone to your house when you call nine-one-one, and we have that common goal, so that's what we're trying to work towards.
What we're talking about on board, I missed that part, I heard you rest, but just on board with what?
We, we have been talking about what would happen if we put paid staff and how to put paid staff up there, and we, it's, I wouldn't say we're on board yet, but we're in a much better situation than we were a year ago, where we all realize there is coverage that needs to be had, we just have to figure out how we're going to do it, and how we're going to pay for it.
But in their defense going back, it, they never guaranteed us really anything when they took on the ambulance service, you know, they, they really did not, it was an addition and a plus that we welcomed, but, and just haven't been able to stay after this much as we would like to see.
And I, again, I appreciate all that's been done and what they're trying to do, but you establish, going back, you establish a requirement, what do the citizens of four and five expect? And you maybe can't afford it right now, but what is the requirement, how would you meet it if you had the funding to do so? That doesn't go away. And I'm hoping the chief is working on that, I was under the impression there was an analysis being conducted, that would kind of bring all that data into play, but we can't let this drop, if they can't meet their goals or meet the requirement, we need to look at alternatives.
We had an alternative, Travis, and I came up with an offer to take over that station also, but they would not, they would not go, we can't make them go for it, like that's what we wanted to do, and we wanted to even make it mandatory, but Bartos and Mangahick and Manna and I and all those departments at that time were not going to go for it, and all we could do is do Station One, so we can't force anybody to do that.
I don't disagree with the sentiment that that's bringing, you know, it's, again, we need to plan for the future and then the reality of the present, so, so that's all fine, you know, I think we're all sitting here acknowledging that, you know, there's going to come a time when that needs to improve, and we're going to have, and how we, how we deal with that, you know, but we can only deal with what we can afford to deal with at the time, so we're doing what we do now, our population centers are covered, you know, those busts in the rural areas could probably do with more coverage, but we'll have to slowly build to that.
And going back, during this administration, one before, we had tried to cut taxes, but I'm really doable, it's the same kind, whenever we take on that career stage, it's expensive, and we all have it. I think that's enough. I mean, like I said, we need, we need coverage in those districts, yes.
Well, because when we, you know, when we talk about the coverage in Mangahick, I mean, we talk about it because there's a station there, but we also have Station, you know, District Two, we've got, you know, no dense population centers, but we certainly have high-risk populations out here in this area of the county too, that, you know, probably require better coverage as well, but again, the reality is, you know, down here, we don't even have a building to put them in at this point, so there's, there's a lot of work still to be done, none of us think that what we've got done to this point is the end game, but it certainly is a big improvement everywhere we work.
Not to the labor, but if we had hard evidence statistics, it helps explain to citizens who relentlessly complain about taxes, is what do you want to forfeit? Do you want to forfeit good, fire EMS, police, X, Y, Z, and I don't know that we have statistical evidence to show, this is why Ray needs to say what it is, to maintain the fragile capabilities we have. I'll get off now.
And just, just, Mr. Moran, we do actually keep statistics on everything and monitor all the calls that are being run, I am working with Ron and plans on the future to see, because it's more than just what we have right now, it's the increase of what's coming into the county too, when we start talking about neighborhoods and all that, so that is not going underneath the bridge, that is being watched and evaluated and constantly captured in everything that we are doing.
Thanks, Laura. Anything else on that section?
I don't think it's explicit here, Mr. Chairman, but some notes, I saw that funding was available in past years for both background checks and drug screening, and it's zeroed out for twenty twenty-one. Is it oversight or on?
I'm sorry, that's.
The funding for background checks and drug screening have been in, have been in the budget for prior years, it was zero this year.
If you're, are you talking about, do they consider care?
No, drug screening, background checks.
Oh, I don't know that, I don't know that either. What section?
Yeah, what section are you?
It was in this nightmare of.
And you're talking about.
Was that in the bright printout you saw?
Yeah, two, section two.
Yeah, okay.
That's the bright printout, sometimes things move, isn't it? Everyone needs to have a setup of rulers.
Yes, because in nineteen, we did have a huge expense for drug screens, what was happening is, well, we still continue to do it, drug screens were ran on every volunteer, every, everyone that was brought in to the firing EMS, and that was when we were trying to to start that with our group of people. So when we took the applications for the volunteers, the chief at that time was running drug screens and on everyone, whether he approved them to be in the volunteer staff or not. So that was something we had to kind of stop him doing. So now, right now, it, we only run them as we receive the applications from a volunteer if Laura, the chief, current chief actually says, yes, I'd like to go ahead and consider this person as volunteer, and the same thing for employees. We don't run the drug screens unless we're gonna actually, yes, yeah.
So that's a one-time only, just, just during the application process? Once, if they are hired, they are, uh, it's no random testing program at all, is it?
I don't know.
The chief, if there's an accident, isn't that mandatory that there be a drug screening?
Uh, yes, there's, we do the initial, I'm sorry, we do the initial hire drug screen, and then after that, anytime, and we've run, in the past couple of months, we've had two drug screens run, because anytime we have an auto accident, we have an injury, we have anything like that, it is part of our policies as a county to go ahead and do that drug screen, and then, um, on top of that, no, we do not do any random drug screening.
And you're probably on the way, and then also on this.
Sheriff Walton?
He's there.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm trying to unmute, sorry. Uh, yeah, we have the same policy, if a deputy's involved in an incident, uh, to have a drug test done, other than that, drug screen is only done at the time of hire.
And what about the cause, Sheriff?
I'm sorry?
What about this cause, Mike, if you suspect? You do it?
Correct. I- i- if there's, if there is a suspicion of, of drug use, yes.
And we do the same for county employees that drive the fleet vehicles or the departmental vehicles. If there is an accident, then they are tested, and we also do it at initial hire, but there's no random.
So there's nothing about suspicion? Correct.
Correct. I mean, we were, we were able to do random testing, but when Mr. Reader was here, he did not like that, and so he had it taken out of the, um, human resource policy. You know, if there is something suspicious, then we may address it, you know, in a, a special situation, but no, we don't just do random.
Thank you.
Next section, we'll move to section D, Cultural Operations, Community Development, Parks and Recreation, and the first one, Operations, Building Inspections, page twenty.
In this department, there really is very little change to, the travel and training increased to 4,000, though it was pretty much offset by other reductions in other areas. Again, we are probably going to scrub that. We do have a new individual in place that has been hired, and he will need training, but we will just, it's not essential training to do the job, it would be certificates that he should acquire, though, in his job. And so we will work with the department head to ensure that he meets his requirements, but that will parse out the training, so that it's not such a major impact.
I guess the utilities thing is still a bright thing, the percentage of, because they use a little more of it, that's why that almost doubled. I see you online, do you want to add anything to that, or?
Uh, yeah, building inspections is under operations, it's not under planning and zoning.
Sorry.
Operations now is over building inspections, department, utilities, and facilities.
Ah, okay. Next section, we have the operations with the utilities department, section pages thirty-four and thirty-five.
You'll note that we are looking at increased revenues, but at the same time, what we have been trying to do, when we have revenue generating funds such as water, sewer, parks and rec, we are trying to move staff and benefits over to those, as long as they are self-sustaining funds. And that's what we have done in the water and the sewer fund. Anyone that we could move over that was legitimately applied to those funds has been. We are also requesting 150,000 of the contingency, which is basically prior-year money that has not been spent, that just rolls forward, because these funds are totally separate from the general fund. Uh, and so whatever is earned in those funds, retained there, rolled forward, and can be expended directly from there. And so we're trying to make the best use of our revenues as they come in and offset the impact to the general fund when possible. And the contingency of 150,000 is just because there are unknowns. With the water fund, we had a leak over at the water tower, just in the last two weeks, where we had to call out GL Howard and have them repair it. We just have instances like that, and so if for some reason we, we wind up pushing our budget to the max, then we have that prior-year money that we can count on, and we don't have to come back to the board and request it. At the same time, if we don't spend it, it just rolls forward into the next year's water fund.
Because salaries and wages went up over $100,000, I'm liking all that, is 100% recovered, that's, is it air staff?
It's the staff that's related to water and sewers, yes. We've just moved them off of general fund and moved, moved them over. We started doing that about two years ago, but this year we got very focused on doing that. Because, I mean, when you're, you're having a large prior-year balance every year, there's no reason to continue to hit the general fund, when you know consistently that you're earning this money every year. So moving the personnel over just makes sense. And the same with the, the sewer fund. And with the sewer.
I'm sorry. The sewer fund, what is that?
Those are still the connections that we receive.
Sewer connection.
Yeah. We still receive those funds, even though HRSD.
But we have a salary on it?
Yes, it's a split. It's a split between the water and the sewer, because we have our utilities manager, then we have our water operator, we have a utilities billing clerk, and then part of the operations director's salary comes out of these. So we spread it out as much as possible. We are also asking to push in the 225,000 for the contingency from prior-year money. And there again, if it's not expended, then it just rolls forward and is available next year.
Next section, operations, this is facilities department, page twenty-two.
And under the facilities department, which is again under operations, there is an increase there. Part of that is that Parks and Rec had a recreation assistant position that took care of the park, mode, maintenance, things like that. That, when Ms. Fox moved over to the general registrar's office, and because of the facilities department and manager that we have, which has been a true blessing to the county, I moved that position over to the facilities department, so that that manager would have all of the buildings, all of the property, under their purview, and there would be no disconnect in dealing with different managers. So the salaries went up because of that money being pulled, pushed over to, and that position being pushed over to, which of course increased the benefits. Purchase services, that is just kind of the name of the game when it comes to all of the service contracts that we utilize. We have septic systems, we have fire suppression, we have Southern Air with our HVAC maintenance, it's just a costly endeavor. But we have excellent contracts in place. And the utilities, communications and rentals, that has gone up as well, and there again, we have increased the utility cost. Do you know what other areas, Natasha, that that included?
Yeah, because, okay, so if we just looked at Station One now, the expenses for Station to have that building now, we're looking at, and, and this is like the general overhead monthly expenses. So we're looking at 31,000 annually per Station One, the 360 complex, 27,000.
But remember that, that is electricity and heating and insurance. And so in this new budget, finance broke it down by the buildings. So by parsing it out like that, it has increased the, the bottom dollar. Now, some of that with the 360, if we do move ahead, will be spent. If we put it on hold for a while, won't be, will be covering for insurance and minimal electricity and heating. So it just kind of depends. But that's just the cost of doing business. Thankfully, our insurance is going to be going down on our vehicles, whoever's comp continues to go up. So it's about an 80,000, almost an $80,000 increase overall, but part of that is the employee that was pushed over.
Any questions? Next section, we have Community Development, Planning and zoning, page nineteen.
And this department, you're, you're gonna note that the salaries and wages went down, that's because the GIS technician was moved to operations, which also reduced the employee benefits. The purchase services went up overall because of the comprehensive plan that we're going to hopefully go under contract for, starting this summer. So those funds were set aside in there. So there's actually a decrease in the overall budget from FY '20 to '21.
Next thing, we have outside agencies, page twenty-three.
Under the outside agencies, the only two that really reflect any increase is Bay Transit, and there again, it's less than $300, and Bay Transit is who we have a verbal agreement with the town of West Point and King and Queen. We contribute the same amount each year. Rappahannock Community College, I thought the president did a very good presentation when she came to the board, and that, again, was minimal, just to help cover some of the maintenance costs at the university.
Queen Rivers is now known as something else, recall.
Thrive VA. Drive or drive? Thrive. Drive.
But they do still expand resources in Kingsway.
They did the same thing they did before, it's just rebranding. Now, the reason that we had pulled those funds is there was an, an issue a, a couple years ago, with the director had hired an, an individual who was on a registry that he, you wouldn't want an individual in your employ and the social services type of work to be on. And that caused some fallout within the agency, some people tried to whistleblow, and they got fired for it. It was a big old mess. And so Mr. Greenwood and I, at, at the time, were contacted indirectly by some, some individuals involved with that organization, and then talked with the Commonwealth's attorney and then decided that we were gonna pull funding from that organization. They've since, they got a new director, but I, I haven't talked to, I had a brief conversation with the Commonwealth's attorney a, a couple of months ago, about whether or not they were, that they were improving, and he indicated that they were, but, you know, where we are right now, I don't know that we want to add anybody to the line items right now, but maybe if things improve, we could go talk to them, talk to the Commonwealth's attorney, because he deals with them pretty often, and social services, I think, deals with them pretty often, and just see, you know, if that's an organization we want to support. I still work with them, business side, I deal with their healthy families initiative, and we fix cards for some of the clients in that program at a, you know, reduced cost. So those individuals that do that type of ground-level work, I don't think they were ever the problem, they're still doing a really good job. It was some topless stuff that we were doing.
Bay Transit, how do we impress upon them that their efficiency needs to be increased?
They would tell you that they're operating as efficiently as they can.
One thousand or?
Well, the question becomes, you either have that, or you have none.
I, I understand.
And then, you know, Bobby's been through this. This is part of an agreement that had been hatched out with King William, with West Point and King Queen, and, you know, the agreement was that each party would contribute, you know, their share. And we shirked that a few years ago, it caused quite a problem at the regional level. PDC got involved, King and Queen Administrator, quite vocally and quite publicly, reminded us that we had a responsibility and a duty that we could agree to, and we restored our, our funding amount.
I don't disagree with the mission, it's the way that it's executed. This begs for Uber, Uber kind of environment, it's called, someone that's, that's on-call for Bay Transit and an efficient vehicle, do it, get home, go to the next. But running vans, gas-gasling vans up and down the road with one passenger, or maybe no passengers, is just not efficient. I'm not saying this year, but we need to look at this and, and press them.
If we, if we have that discussion, though, we need to have it with all parties involved. We can't have it unilaterally. So if we want to, to start having that kind of conversation, we need to loop it in West Point, we need to loop it in King and Queen, and, and talk to them and see what their feelings are, and, and have that talk, but we can't, we can't do it unilaterally, certainly.
I understand.
Yep.
Is, is that determine the, the amount, if they are share, by the, the amount of usage by each county, or does each, like, West Point, King and Queen, and King William all pay equally, no matter what usage it is by the county citizens?
It is equally shared.
It is? Is it equal?
It's equally shared regardless of usage.
That's right. Because I, I did know that if we reduced ours, it would, it affects them.
Yes. So they are paying a, paying a larger share.
It's an expensive venture, I agree, and I see it too, but if you're gonna have any public transportation, it is what it is. I think the Uber might even cost you more, I don't think, I, I don't know that, but.
Well, we need to, you know, if, if we're concerned about it, and we've talked to them about it before, and they've run models for us to show why they do what they do versus doing other, you know, other ways, you know, as far as having a, a central hub where you're shuttling vehicles in and out of on, you know, on, on an on-call basis, versus doing the types of routes that they do, you know, predictable routes a couple of times a day. And there's different services that they offer, you know, within, that they're, they're paid at a different, so it, it's, it's a more complicated thing than just one bus going up and down the county. So we probably need to, to, to get in there and actually look at what they do, why they do it, have them explain that to us in, in some greater detail, and then talk to our regional partners to see if there's a, a different way that they would like to see things done, to see if there are opportunities for efficiency in there. But again.
And, and nobody else offers that service, correct?
Uh, no, there is no one else that offers that service. There were some private transportation companies that spread it up about seven or eight years ago, that were doing, that, that we'd actually approached, to, to see about completely eliminating Bay Transit and going with a model that would pay them to do it, but. But there was one company that their whole business model was only Medicaid transports. So they weren't interested in it, and the other one folded up about as quickly as it. So that, you know, we, we did, when there was an opportunity, when we thought we had an opportunity to do something different, we explored it, but those doors closed very quick.
Stuart, I, I know that Williamsburg was also contacted. However, that must have been more expensive also because they didn't go with.
Okay.
I don't think, it's a whole lot of that out there, other than the individualized, like Uber, Lyft, too. I don't even know if they come to this, or you'd be honest with me.
They create.
Yeah.
Are you following?
So sure, we can talk about it.
Okay.
I think that Bay Transit actually will pick you up also with a, an appointment. That's what I'm thinking. But in that van.
Yeah, so again, that's a different.
A lot of citizens.
Program, yeah. And I don't know who pays it. I don't know if that's the Medicaid transport, you know, because they do different things.
And I, and I know it's a low number, but we've got some folks that are blind and medically challenged that use it and they would just be at home.
By, by no means am I disputing the need and the mission of that activity. Let's find, let's find a more efficient one.
Be the bottom line, you might say, be like, I agree, I mean, it should be, I think Travis is right, we need to sit down and everybody. I was just wondering, we did all the sections, but we did increase one, one percent, two percent of that inflation or why there's, wouldn't Rappahannock something to do that we cut last time and we wanted to add that?
No, the request that the community college had made was just maintenance. It was basically the.
Parking lots?
It's the two, six feet distance from the buildings or whatever it is in code. So it was basically, it wasn't even over two hundred dollars.
Okay.
Yeah. But it always goes towards the maintenance.
I noticed everything else was still level except that. I mean, back then, I would make a difference. That is more than two percent is money. Any other questions?
Yes, sir. Arts Alive, and where is the O in the last one?
Yep.
So Arts Alive is, that matches a state rate that has to come from the local government. And the state will match that dollar for dollar up to the amount that we give. And the cap is either ten thousand or it must be ninety-five hundred now. So if you were to reduce that by any amount, you would reduce it doubly. This is one thing to keep in mind, you know, if you cut it, if you cut the entire amount, you would have to be cutting Arts Alive by nine thousand five hundred, you'd be cutting nineteen thousand.
No, the total is the ninety-five hundred.
The state reimbursed us for.
As I say, we only pay five thousand.
Yeah, so it's our contribution is fifty thousand.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, this model definitely isn't what it used to be. We used to have a model that was whatever, you know, our contribution wasn't a match yet, but we're matching good. So yeah, so it's.
Can you restate that, Natasha, will you?
Yeah, because I had it wrong.
The state reimbursed us forty-five hundred dollars of that, ninety-five.
Up to forty-five hundred. Okay. New guy question. Why are taxpayers funding an arts program?
Because they're utilizing it. And I don't know about your district, I'll be honest with you, and Magnick, but from the fourth on down, I know many of them. His mother uses it, correct? I mean, they, they come down from all over the county. And we're also supported, I say, I'm not a part of it, but we're supported by UKET and King and Queen also. And it's really the only venue that you can get some of these bands to come into. When they did the presentation, you remember, they, they will not come in unless the acoustics are just right and the sound system is just right. You're able to go to events that you'd never see in your life.
Well, and it's not just the concerts, it's camps, it's other programs for seniors, it's camps, it's for youth, for visual arts, performing arts. It's, it's a, you know, it's a pretty well-rounded program that they operate that's utilized by, again, young and old, from certainly from all parts, King William and the other neighboring localities as well. So I mean, there's nearly logical question in there, sure, you know, one that I might disagree with you on because I would think that for, you know, a modest amount of money supporting an arts program, this is a fine endeavor. Some would disagree with me, but.
Well, I'm, uh, I'm in agreement with Ed. You know, we're at a point right now where we're asking ourselves to make sacrifices. And, and I know what Bill said, but I know a lot of people in the fourth district, I don't know of anybody that's been to any of those events. You know, if we're looking to cut some money, to me, that, that might be a, a good place. I mean, it's just with what we are facing and what we may be facing. You know, hopefully we'll see our way out of it soon, but, uh.
And effectively, how is it over gone? They're not going to be able to conduct any of these concerts or activities.
Exactly.
Well, we need to consider a portion of this contribution that they're not going to be able to use.
This.
Well, actually, quite the opposite of that. That's going to affect their budget negatively because the revenue that they do bring in from their shows is now gone.
And you stay afloat.
But the expense, there's no expense.
Well, again, this, this isn't, this, this is to maximize state dollars as well coming in to support these types of programs. So the state's put money on the line to say that they'll support these types of programs, if the local government as well. I, you know, I've been down this road enough times. And the reason that this community page looks the way that it does is because when, when we were first here, there's a whole page of organizations that we get a thousand dollars, five hundred two, and every year we would sit here and six of our eight hours would be cutting Bay Transit five hundred dollars or, you know, cutting some other program fifty dollars. And we would come up with thirty thousand dollars in savings and we'd feel really good about ourselves, we would have accomplished nothing. So Terry Stan and I came in one year and said, look, we are going to go through here, we are going to prioritize, we're going to have this pot of money, we're going to prioritize who gets that money, everybody else is gone. So the people that are on this list are the ones that were able to justify their organizations getting this money in one shape or fashion. And I have fought that fight, and I've fought that fight so many times that I don't really want to fight that fight again. You know, we're not talking about the drastic amount of money. If we really want to show sacrifice again, I would go back to the cutter and salaries rather than to cut a program that's utilized by people in the county that once things get back to normal, we're going to want these things to still be here. You know, do they care if I'm here? No, they probably don't, but they probably want this program to be there, so.
And I would not vote to get rid of this, nor would I vote to get rid of the upper King William senior center. I mean, we can keep packing it, just a little bit, and we're giving away here.
Move on to the next section. Looks like we don't have the consensus on that, so. Next section is joint government agencies, page twenty-three, oh, we're on page twenty-three now. I guess it's a different section.
It's a topic, yeah.
In that section, you see that Pumonkie Regional Library is the major increase. It's about fifteen, sixteen thousand dollars. There again, that's related to health benefit costs. They had to relocate their primary central office this past year. And at the time, I believe that included a very small pay increase of one, one and a half percent.
Can't help it that it's the NPA tower. Is that somewhere, is that, that's probably economic development, isn't it?
Given the shape of the upper King William multiviral library, we can't support an increase, any increase whatsoever. When you compare them to the library area, let's say, a pound, national, this one is subpar by any stretch. I would love to understand, they did not present, I'm not mistaken, what their plans are to either include King William's facility. I don't know why we can't, at least, at the very least, at the very most, I guess, just to level funding.
And I couldn't hear you, the lights are, you must have left.
Level five.
Level funding. Okay, you do, and we can discuss that, but I want to make sure that this is for the library of King William and one in West Point.
Yeah.
I've never been to the one in West Point, but the one at Central Mirage is.
I don't know.
Well, that's the space we give, you know, the other counties that have better facilities are because of the county's built facilities. You know, the one in King and Queen was built and donated by Mr. Walker before his passing. The one in Hanover was built by Hanover. You know, they, they set up shop wherever you can provide them space.
And West Point.
The one in West Point is owned by the town and is donated to them, so.
They pay their rent. And actually, County Board is clean, so a lot of expenses that we might see are not in this.
So most of this expense in here, and in fact, I think it's probably, I don't want to say it's all of it, but I wouldn't be surprised if it was all of it, is personnel.
Personnel, but they also do pay rent out of this to Mr. Bailey.
I was wondering, didn't we have something that we were going to get a building? Remember when we first started, there was.
There was land somewhere that was proper.
Do we still have?
We had to build a building.
Do we still have that?
We do, it's about two acres, right, going into Kennington's subdivision off of three sixty. Problem is, is that we have to come up with the funds to build the building. And we've just had some things that took precedent, you know, fire station.
So we found a partner, you know, benefactor or something like that that was willing to build a building.
But how much do we pay rent? Do you happen to know how much we pay daily?
Do you know?
I'm sure it's the going rate.
Oh, I know, because he charges a lot. I was wondering, maybe we could put him in another one of our buildings, maybe, instead of something else.
We have, I think they pay around thirty thousand.
Big space.
Yeah, I think it's that, and then of course, electricity and utilities. And then they did expend funds to, they get E-rate money just like the schools do. And so they utilize that to get Segra to run fiber to their operations.
This is a regional thing, too, don't we split it with some?
Yeah, it's Goochlin, Hanover, King and Queen, King William.
So again, if we reduced it, the others would have to pick up the burden.
Well, what, the way it's modeled, it's modeled kind of weird. You know, basically what would happen is if we reduced the request, they would need to reduce staffing to match that request.
Which we did once.
We did that. Well, we did it in eighteen, nineteen, eighteen, I think they requested an increase of four forty, we denied it. And so they cut it way back, the hours, and so we increased gradually at four forty. And.
So if we owned, if, if the county owned an acceptable building, then we could look at thirty thousand dollars of revenue from, from them yearly.
The reduction in their expense of thirty thousand dollars is what we would be looking for, rather than revenue to the county.
I've heard that the bank building down on three sixty, the old South Side Bank Building, it's not on the market, but it is for sale, from what I understand. Mr. Walker also owned that.
They gave it to the corner, cornerstone.
It was a bank available at one time or something.
It sounds like a thing, but I thought they have a, so they have a training center in there and the food banks. Are they leaving?
No, I had heard that it had been given to the food bank.
Unless, we had to refit it with the internet and the back.
Sure, regardless, the point for today's discussion is that we would need to either buy or build to get them out of where they are.
I think we're trying to reduce it. Build the whole building, get some land, if we could get arena to build, if we have the land, maybe.
Well, you, I was just thinking, or, you know, a private citizen, if they were to buy it, that would be a pretty good stream of income if, if a Pumonkie Regional would be interested in moving into that building. That's a nice building.
Um, but, I mean, it would, again, you got to look at what, what expenses you're looking to reduce, I guess, and things.
Yeah.
But if we're concerned about what they're in, that's why they're there, is because it was the only place for them to go.
At least look into something like that.
So now we're talking about capital, yeah, we're really, we're talking about.
So.
You're right, we're looking at, at cutting costs here.
So what is the board's consensus on the increase for Pumonkie Regional?
You said, you said that increase was from, from what, from salaries?
It was a, a small merit increase, but a lot of it is health coverage increases that they bear. Also, their central office had to move, so the overhead, which includes the administrative section, was also built into that, it went up a little bit. They let me know that about ten or eleven months ago, that these were going to be some increases that we would see.
Are they open? Does anybody know if they're, I don't think they're open, I'm sure you're.
I doubt it, I don't think any of the libraries are open right now. You can still pull up to the outside and use the internet on one stop, but you can't go inside. And I heard that you could actually make it a form and get, or book, and they'd bring it to his door, but I don't know if that was true or not.
So currently, they have, for the upper King William branch, they have one full-time employee. They are trying to increase that to two next year and actually add a librarian to the staff for the upper King William branch. And for West Point, they have one currently full-time. They want to increase that to two, same thing, they want to increase and actually add a librarian, too.
But their librarian is shared throughout multiple sites.
All of that money you can increase is shared, correct, is what you said? My diaries, that turns red. So everybody's my help.
Yes. The request was an increase for everyone.
Yeah.
Because I think when we reduced it before, we got into some. I don't know, I'd like to cut them level, but I mean, we got more and cuts, but I don't think it's worth it. That I was in dealing with, hopefully we'll. And if we do, we'll cut the hours again, but like Ed said, they're closed now, but we can't keep, they have to keep paying their bills, they got to keep paying the labor, they got to keep paying the rent, so nothing stops.
Send the message that we desire to level funding and find out what they, what that would result.
Cut.
Okay.
I think that's what we did before, they cut a day or cut hours.
Yeah, I would love to ask everybody, maybe collectively, is the utilization, what, who is actually using facilities?
A lot of people use it, but it's free. Tea party uses it, they don't pay, well, it's free. And one, and one party is the ones that don't have the internet, or I have heard anyone say, I don't live up on that end, but heard them say that they're actually using the internet for that. And they have to drive there to be able to get.
I'm simply saying that these, these entities need to develop their, you know, justify, they have to justify in this austere environment, and we're not going to get better. They need to be able to justify their existence. I'm sorry, it's just, it's, it should be expected in, in government.
Well, just go ahead and read the narrative to just what they've sent. So costs to operate shared services are projected for the fiscal year. The cost for these, this is reduced by regional funding sources, including state aid, fines, fees, gifts, et cetera. The remainder is allocated to participating localities on a per capita basis. So Goochlin takes ten percent, Hanover takes sixty-three, King and Queen four percent, King William ten percent. They also did list, we have the number of visitors that they have, if you wanted to know that, but they, they've given us some pretty good numbers to kind of go off of.
But that, that won't tell you where they come from, rather.
No, they're not saying specifically upper and West Point, they're putting King William as one.
You really probably could come from one of the counties, right, around King and Queen.
Well, King and Queen has a real library right now, right?
And, yeah, and I use King and Queen's library frequently when I can't get into ours. That's what makes it so nice.
The numbers, what I'm really getting at, the numbers may or may not reflect just King William residents.
But they, they do provide.
But they probably reflect people within the library membership system, which I think is probably the most important.
Right.
Because again, because we're sharing these costs across the system.
But they do provide data and support with the numbers, of course, you know, it's not as granular, probably, you know, as, you know, we'd like. But I guess my concern is, is that we sat on the three hundred and ninety-nine thousand, six hundred and fifty for two to three. Yeah, quite a few years, and finally started increasing. And, you know, the knee-jerk reaction is that they do reduce the hours. Well, the citizens don't like that because there is a, a good use of that. the citizens don't like that because there is a, a good use of that. They did not anticipate this virus, so yes, a lot of their services are not being utilized, but they did estimate the request on what they were anticipating needing. So that is why I did not change it, because we're not going to be in this environment forever. You know, we do need to continue to support a lot of these organizations that impact our citizens that don't have a computer at home or an internet at home or whatever. It's also a congregating area, usually. Will be again. So, you know, if the board wants me to go back and ask them what level funding would do, I'll be glad to do that.
With the governor's new opening on May eighth, will they not be open, but they'll have to be a limited number in the building, I think, in a second, correct?
I would think so.
So it, it's, it could be in a few weeks, in three weeks be back open again.
Yes, I'm hoping. I have three books I need to turn in.
So let's, let's ask them with that.
Okay.
Uh, we've, we've done that exercise before, and then we talked about it. In the meantime, let's make sure that everybody gets an opportunity to view that narrative and look at those numbers, and then we can, you know, make a decision, just kind of by consensus, talking to you and we're talking to the chairman about how we want to handle that.
Okay.
Travis, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't understand that. Did you say that we would ask them for, or level funding, or is something that the board needed to discuss further?
What I'm proposing, Stuart, is that we, we ask them to model what level funding would look like. In like, in all likelihood, that's going to mean reduced staffing or reduced hours of operation. We can look at the narrative that they've provided to us, that, that, you know, the usage, maybe some of us can take an opportunity to contact Ms. Mitchell, not Anne Mitchell, but Audrey Mitchell, who's on the library board, and talk to her about some of those numbers as well, um, and, and some of the services that they provide, and make an informed decision on whether or not it's worth it to, to make this production, because, um, again, we're not really moving the needle there as far as our own budgetary needs, but we may be having a, a pretty drastic impact on the services that are provided, and so we'll make.
Well, you know, we, we don't know until we ask, you know, ask that question either.
Sure. And so that's what I'm proposing, we ask, and then we make an informed decision.
Yeah, okay.
All right. Next section we have is economic development, page twenty-five.
Uh, economic development. Had requested additional grant monies, which I did not recommend. I'm recommending level funding. If you look at the FY twenty adopted, you see that it's at fifty-three thousand plus, and that is because the board approved rolling forward funds from the previous year that was unused for a grant program.
Is Jay or Kenny on?
No, not to my knowledge.
And it was deeply discussed last night. I left after an hour of no decision. What was the ultimate decision?
Um, they chose to go with a grant program that New Jersey is using for small businesses. They were tweaking their stipulations for what, who can apply for the grant, and today they sent over an example of a grant application.
So they intend to expand grant money prior to winter? What was the remainder balances?
Um, yes, I believe they have twenty-three thousand to work with right now, and depending on how many applications they get in, they will consider using the remaining balance of about, what was it, twenty-seven or something as well.
Who else? All right. Next item we have is parks and recreation administration programs, page twenty-four, thirty-six.
Jennifer Crowley is on the line, yes, she was.
She's there.
Good morning.
Morning.
Hey.
Under this department, you'll see that there has been a major reduction in the salaries and wages and benefits. That's, again, because we have found consistent revenue supportive in the revenue generating fund, and so we've moved some of those positions and benefits off of the general fund to the revenue generating fund. And then on page thirty-six, that is the fee fund that I was talking about, the revenue generating fund, and you'll see that we have increased our anticipation of revenue while at the same time moving some of those personnel costs over.
So as an example, the Little League season is still up in the air.
Was that question for me? I did not hear it.
Where, where would Little League fall? Would it be youth programs or what classification here?
Um, Little League is a separate entity. We don't get any money from the Little League, but our expenditures come out of the general fund.
Jennifer, I mean, would you expand on that? I mean, they, I know that they have an agreement with us for the concession stand. What do they do in compensation to the county or to your program?
Sure, sure. So they give us eighteen hundred dollars a year for use of the concession stand. We are required to maintain it, upkeep it, pay for everything, electricity, paper products. We just renovated the bathrooms last year, as well as the concession stand itself, the new doors. We just put in a new ice machine. We take care of the, the hood over the grill, maintenance on all of those. So that's where you'll see a lot of that money goes to that, and then as well as the park in general.
But Little League also does a lot of their own work with field maintenance and things like that as well, don't they?
Yeah, they have three fields that they maintain, and we maintain the others as well as all of the, the general areas.
Do they pay for any of the electricity costs?
No, ma'am. We pay that. There's averages about seven thousand dollars a year for that, so that's what you see reflected in the purchase services and utilities.
And moving forward in twenty-twenty-two, we are gonna start breaking down that separating, any costs that we do have for the parks and rec. A lot of that has been hitting general properties, so now we're moving that to basically hit Jennifer's Fund one hundred expenses, so we can actually keep track of those instead of just putting it in a big old bucket of repairs, maintenance, all that other, all their supplies that.
But if the question you were, you were hinting at was, are there any savings that we're gonna book by the fact that Little League season might be delayed, abbreviated, or canceled altogether now? Because, yeah, they operate and, and most of that is operated by the Little League, which is nothing that we.
Correct. Yeah, we, we are still maintaining the fields with the anticipation that it will be opening up, but we are still out there doing it. And, and Troy is as well. He's, he's doing his fields, too. So they're maintaining theirs, and we're doing ours. So there would not be.
Let me ask you a question. Uh, King and Queen County.
Uh huh.
Do they have a, do they have a parks and rec at all? I know all those kids found their way to, to King William County.
I, I believe most of them come here to King William. I, as far as I know, I don't believe they have a parks and rec department.
And they, they never contribute anything at all to have, to have in all their, their people use our park, correct?
No, that's, no, anything that they participate in, if they participate in Little League, then they're paying Little League to participate. If they participate in basketball, or if they participate in anything that we operate, they're paying that user fee, just, just like anybody else is.
Yes, you are correct.
Yeah, no, it, it's not true to say that they don't support it. Uh, you know, anything that, that requires a user fee, they're paying, uh, you know, regardless of where they're coming from, King and Queen.
Correct.
Yeah, but the, the user fee is just basically registration, insurance, you know, uh, King and Queen, this has been going on forever, believe me. Uh, I was a child when, when the first ball field, field was built there, and, uh, it's always been that way. I was just wondering if it's a way that we could ask King and Queen to maybe step up to the plate a little bit?
Well, again, we, we actually, the Parks and Rec Committee was, when I was on it, we went through those fees, and we structured them in a manner that they were, um, they were supporting the programs that they, you know, paid for, not, not just insurance, not just a registration fee, but they actually paid the costs of the program. So.
So that would be, that would, that would be the individual parents or whatever. Uh, that would not be the county saying, okay, we don't have a facility, let them go to King William, you know, because, uh, the fees that are generated, the, uh, the citizens say the, the, the parents live in King William. That's fees the parents are paying, correct? So the fees that you're talking about that were generated are for the participants.
That's right, but they also cover the, the cost in, in aggregate of, of the program itself. So, you know, if it costs Parks and Rec, you know, a certain amount of money to operate basketball, then the fees that we, you know, we set a fee that collects the appropriate amount of money to support that program in, in its entirety. Um, you know, so there's no additional cost in having more kids coming from King and Queen. If anything, it, it recovers more money.
You're correct, Travis. Yep.
Yeah, so, you know, uh, we, we've had this discussion. That's why, I just want to chime in, because this is not something new. This is something that we've talked about before.
Absolutely.
Um, that's why we set the fees back then the way that, that we did, um, so that there wasn't any, you know, money coming out of the general fund to support these things. They were all self-support.
Absolutely.
That's, that's not.
Yeah, I, I understand, but I, I still think that, uh, King and Queen is, is the reason they do not have a facility or, or facility or Parks and Rec is because of King William County being so gracious. That's just my opinion.
Well, that may be, that may be true, but I guess my point is that the taxpayers of King William County aren't paying any extra money because of that.
Correct.
And that's not uncommon even with you, Ken, or, or any of the others that they accept people from the other counties. And, believe me, it's not cheap.
I'm not saying this to argue with you, Stuart. I'm just saying this, that you know, that this is an exercise that, that we've been through, you know, we, we acknowledge that.
Oh, I understand. I understand, but, but all I'm saying is, uh, I'm sixty-four years old, and it's been going on ever since I was probably ten.
And, and I understand what you're saying. I, I think, you know, they don't have a program, so it doesn't necessarily cost us anything to have them come over the line and join our programs. I think, and sometimes maybe with the, the baseball world, it might help their numbers a little bit, help, so they can have two or three teams and practice against themselves. And, um, so I, I think from that standpoint, but I, I respect what you're saying. I see what you're saying.
Yeah, okay.
Back in the day, back when you were younger, we probably didn't get enough fees from anybody back then. That's why, like I said, Travis was on the Parks and Recs Committee back when we first started, started on the board twelve years ago. They raised those fees a lot to cover, like he said, everything, to cover all that stuff, and to include people from all areas. So in fact, like you said, when you were growing up, it probably was, I mean, more.
Well, back in the day, it was, it was a, a private organization, actually.
Okay, wow.
Yeah, that's, I go back a long time.
I'm almost there with you, Stuart. I'm sixty, so.
Well, yeah, well, I'm, I'm way ahead of you, okay?
Yeah.
The Little League is the only organization, Stuart, that we have that's private. Everything else.
Yeah, I understand.
Yeah, yeah, but, um.
But, you know, the, the, you probably have participants in the various programs from King and Queen also, other than Little League. Back in the day.
We do.
It was, uh, church league softball. Uh, it was a bunch of teams from King and Queen. I'm sure that does, that does not go on anymore, but these were fully grown adults.
Yeah, we're hoping to bring that back. Give us, give us some time.
Yeah, yeah.
That'd be nice.
So how are you doing?
Myself, I'm doing good. I can't wait to take it out of my house.
Me, too.
I know, I know.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Stuart. I appreciate the comments.
Okay.
Anything else on that section? I guess we'll move on to the next section, health and welfare, social services, page thirty-one.
Yes. I'm here. I'm, I'm sitting with Ann Porter in her room, so, um, we're on her phone.
Anybody see anything that pops out the door? If anybody gets there.
And Anne can answer any questions.
Okay, I'm guessing the same thing with the communications utilities with the rest of, yeah, the increase. Percentage of writing, did it?
Pardon, did you ask? I'm sorry.
It's about a six thousand or fifty-four hundred dollar increase in the utilities, communications rentals, et cetera. Are they using brain or is that, I think their percentage of, oh, it's a forty-six percent increase. I'm just asking why.
So for utilities, that's part of our quarterly billing from the county. Rentals, we have actual equipment here that we rent, our postage machine, our copy machines. We have two of those. Uh, so there are actually rental agreements, lease agreements. And as far as rent on the building, um, that's something that is included in, in our county fund, in the quarterly billings. It's not really rent. It's, it's put down as maintenance and that type of thing.
But I guess my question was, why the increase? And not necessarily exactly what it's for.
Okay, um, well, from my perspective, what I put in my budget, the increase came in, an increase in the fees for the postage machine and for the copy machine. Now, as far as the quarterly billing increases, I don't, I don't know exactly. They are put in, some of those numbers are put in by finance based on departmental usage, or when they separate the cost every quarter, they bill as certain amounts.
And Ann, this is one hundred percent recovery on this total expenditure, correct?
One hundred percent.
Mm-hmm.
Well, if you look down at that line, yes, you're looking at the revenue coming in, but you should note that two hundred and four thousand of that is coming from the general.
Right, right, right.
Right. Oh, yeah, okay, I see that. Okay.
Yeah, that's the local match amount. It's fifteen point five percent. It is our base on admin monies, but then if we get pass-through funds, it's sixty-five percent local match. And certain other programs that we administer have purchase lines that we can purchase for clients. Uh, two of those have a twenty percent local match. So the matches vary, but the two big ones administrative are fifteen point five percent and sixty-five percent for pass-through.
Okay, so the line share is still recovered?
Yes.
Thank you.
For the utility, I do see that your actual expenses for cell phones for nineteen was ninety-eight seventy-seven, and we had only budgeted for twenty, twenty, fifty-six hundred. So that's the big, that's a big jump, too, because we have budgeted ten thousand for this fiscal year coming.
Okay.
As the cost was so high in nineteen.
Yeah, it's, um, and that's something that we, we have some control over, but we do have staff who have to have cellphone usage in the field. In fact, right now, a lot of our staff are using cell phones, forwarding their, um, their desk phone to their cell phone so they can get calls.
Yeah, I don't really have anything. Uh. Steven Stubb, Esther, do you have anything? On this section?
Sure.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. Uh, no, I'm, I'm good.
Okay, all right. Thanks, Ann.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Make things conservative services, fine.
We're back to chairman.
No, I had your idea.
The beat got hurt.
It's, it's all right.
Ah, no, don't worry, don't worry. I'm ready to return. All right, CSA fund, there's honestly not a whole lot to be done with that there other than wait for the bill to come in, right?
Yes. Ann Porter's here if you need to ask her any questions.
Yes. Hello, good morning.
And I.
Good afternoon.
What time is it, anyway?
It's twelve fifteen.
Wow.
Another reason.
Time's flying.
You're having fun.
You know it.
Do you have any questions about CSA?
None.
No.
All right, Stuart, we're back to the driver's seat. Nope, we're just, we just closed that one out and then took it out.
Where did you go?
Okay.
You know, they wanted to take a break, so they just have to go. Yeah, it's like a regional animal shelter, page thirty-three. This is more the chair. Oh, instead of the other one. It's not an animal services, I, I just misread it, it's an animal shelter, the chair.
The, um, in this department, the salaries and wages has gone up, I've asked Natasha to take a look at it because, um, the manager's position was definitely impacted by the classification and compensation, but the other two positions were not. This also includes, though, the part-time, so this number may be wrong, the two hundred eighteen? So, how did it jump from one sixty-eight to two eighteen? I know that was one of the departments I had hoped to do an assistant manager, but, that got, uh, removed from the budget this year. So, we may need to take a look at that. And then, uh, one of the employees, it wasn't a change in employee, but, um, she basically became a family. Birth of her child, so she elected the higher coverage. Let's see, the miscellaneous expenses related to animals, uh, that definitely included, um, costs for, um, medical and food, uh, with, especially with all of the seizures that we have had. The Great Danes was a prime example, they basically ate through Lori's budget about five months in.
But that's not reflected in this year's past, is it?
No, but we increased it because we've had five seizures, which impacts all of those costs. So... Yes, I can, I can, yes, because King and Queen does not do any kind of educational or preemptive, um, work, and so, uh, the last five seizures, or every seizure we've had for the last ten months has come out of King and Queen, in some cases, we do get restitution, in some cases, we do not, and the most expensive one that we've had, uh, the gentleman's incarcerated, so I don't think we'll probably be getting anything.
Did you watch Tiger King, man?
I don't want you to do anything. Also, we share it, but they don't, they don't pay it back.
Well, they do, I think the point is... Well, what is your point about that?
Well, the point is, is we've had a lot of unusual circumstances arise, you, I mean, yes, usually we have a seizure or two a year. This year has been insane, and, you know, right now, she's got, uh, five hounds, I think it's five hounds, um, but because of the amount of the seizures, plus the, the normal animals coming through the doors, um, we just decided we needed to kind of increase some of it. She's also, um, soliciting more donations, um, looking at more grant opportunities, uh, Nestle Purina is stepping up and just being absolutely amazing. But, yeah, there, there are going to be some increased costs because we're projecting that these seizures are not going to go down, especially during economic times, people tend to put less towards their animals than before, so...
And those that are, you know, in an animal boarding situation, getting in dire straits, and that's one of these things. You got our problems, so...
We gotta go, we're getting more horses, or tigers. Bears.
That, that salary actually does increase, uh, it, it includes her assistant manager position.
So, that will be removed.
Yeah, yeah.
Excellent, okay, so that did get left in.
Excuse me? I didn't, I didn't hear what she said.
The assistant...
It's gonna be reduced.
The assistant manager position was erroneously left in, so that will be taken out, so that should drop it of what?
So, we just saved this, uh...
How much did we save? Well, we weren't gonna backfill that one position, so it was probably about a twelve thousand savings or more. Yeah, okay, so we will re, correct that. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Next section, we have miscellaneous budgetary departments debt service, page thirty.
So, this one is what it is, except should we be, has this opened up any opportunities to look at any more refinancing opportunities with the interest rate of clients?
We...
A question we should ask bond counselors.
Well, they usually are very proactive in notifying us. Um, the last time that Natasha and I spoke with Davenport, um, and it has been about three months ago, um, there really were no avenues at that time. We can reach out to Jay Mahone and, uh, see if there is anything, but we have not heard anything out of VIPSa.
I was curious, because obviously in the last three months, we've gone to, you know, effective zero at, uh, you know, the crime, so, I, that may or may not, but it's certainly something that is a question we should ask.
And by, she tell you they're closing right now with their rate, that way.
Well, and now, there's, right now, they're bumping on the refinancing because they want to collect all those, all those fees. I get three emails a day from my mortgage company.
Next item, we have transfer from the general fund, page twenty-seven.
And this, you see, which, um, these are predominantly all of the transfers that we do every year, um, you'll note the nine point five million for the schools, uh, the debt services included in here, and that is both the schools and the county. Uh, I did reduce the capital fund down to the two hundred and ten thousand, which was a direct impact to the general fund. Social services is our match, um, victim witness, that is our match, um, the regional animal shelter, that one fifty-two will be reduced because of this salary error, and so that will come down. The four hundred and sixty-two thousand for the CSA, here again, that is just our contribution, and, um, VJ triple C A, uh, we share in a regional agreement with that, and that is our, our, uh, contribution as well. Though, we are talking with VITA about trying to reduce that, aren't we? They, um, have wired a balance that we think that should be applied towards, um, what the counties contribute.
I'm sorry, no, that is, that's the rate that we, she is going to stick at the rate.
And she is?
Yes.
Okay.
But we're, we're going to start using some of, we're going to try to speak with her region, we'll start using some of her fund balance to cover some additional expenses for the children, yes.
Okay, but we are paying more now than we have to, so why would the reserve that she's got, are we not dropping it?
Not what she wants to do, she doesn't want to change what the localities have been putting in for the last, I'd say, ten years.
Is she gonna bring on more staff?
Yes. She intends to use the fund balance to offset an additional person, yes.
Okay.
A full time.
I knew that she had asked for a, a social worker, no, it was not a social worker.
Uh, she's not gonna, she's gonna back down from that, yeah, definitely she can't afford a social worker, but, um, that is just something, we're not even sure if her region is going to upgrade that.
Okay. Okay. So, the transfers, um, in FY twenty-one would be about thirteen point three million, and like I said, um, there will be a slight decrease to that dollar amount because of the regional animal shelter salary line.
Anything else? No. And the last section, we have miscellaneous, page twenty-six.
One thing I would like to note on, um, page twenty-six is that the seventy-five thousand for the contingency, um, is going to be, um, pushed to either the sheriff's department or fire and medic for the, uh, support for one position in either department, so that will be zeroed out and moved. There is a, a slight increase in the operational cost of VIPSa, um, primarily, the increase is the agreement the board went into to help offset the cost of the maintenance building, uh, for five years, it's, how much, Natasha, twenty?
It is twenty-six thousand one hundred and twenty.
Right.
Are they a private corporation?
They are an authority, so they are quasi-public. They're a principal public funding organization.
I'm just curious why they wouldn't have gone after a small business one, or something along those lines, instead of requesting...
Because they're not a private company. They're, they're, they're effectively a, a public company. And I don't mean publicly traded company, I mean, again, they're, they're, they're quasi-government. Uh, it was created by the government, the governing bodies that are members, uh, the representatives on the board are the county administrators, uh, or their designees, uh, and their principal funding stream is the money that they get from the, uh, county governments that are members. So, they're, they're not a private company, what money they get from recycling, it simply offsets the, uh, expense of operating the solid waste management program, uh, which, again, that's, you know, salaries, expenses, capital, et cetera, that, that comes primarily from the fund that, that is, um, coming from the board's supervisory.
There's a question, I don't think you see a revenue line down here for what we make in recyclables and...
It's in your board packet every month, there's, but it gives a report of how many poles they do, revenue that they get from recyclables, so...
Should there be a revenue line?
Well, not, not here, this is effectively the net.
Right.
You know?
And we're on the contract, I, I think in that email you said until twenty twenty-three, is that, does that sound correct?
Correct, it, it was a ten-year agreement.
So, they're, they're an authority, they are independent of us, but they are a, a quasi, you know, essentially government organization. So, their narrative, I'm sure that they probably have that stuff, at the very least, like I said, they provide a monthly report on container poles and all that stuff, and so this effectively becomes our share of the net.
I just wanted to ask you, that revenue came to us?
Yeah, this to this.
Maybe, uh, over the years, we have, when me and Travis came on, that there is no, that actually recycling costs more than the trash, which I was horrified to find out.
Well, the, the, effectively, the amount of money that we get from recycling to offset how much the trash costs us has been drastically reduced in the past, due to, uh, one of their primary purchases, have a paper closing down, the closing of the export market for plastics, uh, the fact that plastics are made much more efficiently now, he gives the example of, you know, squeeze a water bottle, ten years ago, squeeze a water bottle, now they make it about the third, you know, a, a container pole net, about a third of the weight that it used to, uh, and therefore, that revenue's down, and then what they get for that weight is down as well, so, um, they've, they've given us those, those cost breakdowns, and it's only gotten worse since we got a full presentation from them.
Yeah, that's what I mean, the cost is more to have the recycling...
Because that was before the export market replaced it.
Trash, yeah.
So, so, yeah, no, they, they get the revenue and the offset, and the way they, they, they apply it effectively to what, where it's, it's coming from, but it's, um, you know, the revenue doesn't come to us, it is used to offset our costs.
Just looking at the title, what do they do for litter prevention?
Um, that's a grant that they basically, um, provide to us, is that the right one?
It's under, it's under VIPSa, same line.
Yeah, that's five thousand dollars that we need to spend in order to get the grant from the state.
Okay, I had a note here, um, I noticed on one of these lines that litter prevention was down to zero this year, it had been money in the thirty-eight, twenty-three spent last year, so, does that prevent the need for going, for the county asking for litter prevention funding?
Those, well, you have to remember, when the numbers for twenty were run, there had been no expenditures, but we notified the lady that was supposed to be, um, purchasing the products and stuff, and so expenditures have occurred since then.
Orange trash bags, that's, that will be expended by...
Trip will be working with, Trip is, you know, the grant, our grant specialist, he'll work with the disco, I mean, I'm the facilities coordinator, to make sure that we have spent that money to actually apply for the grant, we have to report, yeah, and West Point gets a portion of that grant also, so...
It's at the program, we did for the bags, I remember when the supervisors set us a program.
Right.
We used, we, we, in fact, we used the material that the...
Yeah, so...
But the town gets a small portion of that, and so we write the grant and collect the money.
We did, that brings support, again, the grant supported the material, but then we were paying salary for a part-time employee out of the general fund, and we eliminated that in two thousand twelve. We were monsters in two thousand twelve.
They just cut everybody, get rid of everything.
The two thousand twelve, it was bloody, blood on the floor.
Okay, looks like that's it, does anybody have any additional comments or questions, discussions?
Nothing. Complaint, the employee recognition program was stolen, all of our employee recognition incentives, what we anticipate needing to double that budget?
That is not, um, funds that come out of the general fund, that is money that is earned off of our credit card usage by the staff, and, uh, the board had graciously allowed us to take that and apply that for, um, employee recognition annual meeting and, um, various ones throughout the year.
Funds, if you will.
Yes, that's it.
Maybe it was discussed when I was on my medical consult, but IT expenses, forty-six thousand eight hundred and forty-four, is that something to do with using services from Sabra? Are we paying them because of the, do we pay them a cash payment of the, the fee to bring the line around at home to here, or is this an annual payment?
It's a monthly payment, it's part of the same agreement.
Or are we paying for fiber run?
We initially paid for the fiber run, and then it's a monthly charge. And then we also have, um, Megapath for the T-one line, it's various different costs in companies that are involved.
It would be interesting to ask Travis if someone looked into it, that ISDN lines, T-one lines, if you have, if you have Sabra, if you have a line broadband, they should be able to absorb those types of...
That's something he's been working with for the last couple weeks, uh, we have one T-one line that is using Megapath currently, and we're trying to get that over onto Sabra, but the, um, the state, VITA, is part of that, and that's the, that's where we're having to roadblock, which is, it's perfect timing, because we need Travis to actually connect with VITA now at this point, and then give us a better idea of the infrastructure between, you know, CSS, courts, county admin, all that, so this is perfect timing.
It's on his, but, that's good.
Yes, uh, since Travis has been here, he's already identified, at one point, we were...
Don't tell him, don't tell him.
Well, the questions we had asked go blue, and we were just saying, you don't cut it off, don't cut it off, well, as soon as Travis got here, it was, hey, Travis, can you look into this cost, Cox Communication, two hundred and three dollars a month, what is that for? It was for internet that we were getting supposedly from New Kent Power.
Remember that?
There was a box that said, in, in New Kent, "Do not touch or King William loses their internet," is what, how, what New Kent had on it.
We were doing it for, for courts or something, I don't care what, but, yeah, there's, that's why there's a tower on the Fox Tower.
It's cut off, and we're still going, so, we, yes, so...
I would imagine it would be made very redundant by Sabra coming in, yeah.
Yes, Sabra, we were, now we're trying to identify, there's also an eight hundred and eighty monthly cost that we have to pay currently that is part of the IT budget, um, it's, um, it goes to the, the towers for the sheriff. Monthly cost that we have to pay currently that is part of the IT budget. It's, it goes to the the towers for the sheriff. But once Motorola project is finished, we've already been told by Kurt from Hanover, that can get cut off too. So there's savings in some of the things that we're spending on. Coming down the road. That's, and and it's been great to have Travis here to kind of have someone here that. Asked the questions that we kind of felt we needed answers to, but we weren't sure how to ask the questions and things like that. So this has been really nice. He's helped us cut some of that stuff.
So she's from a company or?
He came from Timmons in Richmond.
Oh, she's worked at.
Yeah, she's over there.
Okay, that's right.
Yeah.
I saw him and I figured where he was, but I've I've never heard.
Yeah, it's been great to have him, even over the sheriff and servers who are dealing with that.
That was our wrap up. Do we need to have another meeting to go?
Two minutes. Two minutes.
Oh, never mind. Wait a second.
This is, it may not be a sole point. I was recently, February eighteen, informed after inquiry that our, some of our committee. Members have received stipends. The Board of Zoning Appeals, Planning Commission, and Social Services. I would like to look into the possibility of deleting those.
We we deleted a lot. There was a point at which pretty much every commission got a stipend of at least fifty dollars a week. We eliminated the vast majority of those in in twenty twelve. And so the ones that survived twenty twelve, you better believe, they got, they got argued over. And so, you know, the justification for leaving them there was that those. The ones that. Remained had a great deal of responsibility, met a lot, met consistently, and then had long meetings when they met. And BZA has fundamentally changed their function in that timeframe, and I guess we've never revisited that, so we could potentially look at what what they're doing, because they don't do that often. But when they do, they normally have a lot of research that they've got to do beforehand, and they've got a lot of of important citizens to make. Same with planning, you know, planning commission, other one, social services was the other one, I think, that survived.
It's eighty three thirty three on the, for planning and BZA.
Well, the BZA is meeting, what, maybe once a year right now?
They've probably met about three or four times in the last year.
They used to meet a month because the way that zoning laws were written, they actually heard every conditional use permit. They were special exceptions, and the board of zoning had to hear them all. That was ridiculous. So we changed that to where it's a more appropriate thing now, and it comes in front of us. You know, the planning commission, obviously, we've just seen what the planning commission does. I know a great deal of legwork, a lot of, sometimes a great deal of travel, certainly a great deal of research. Extra meetings now, getting the comp plan done, things like that. So these are the reasons that these things survive. Again, anything, anything that we thought needed to die, died in twenty twelve.
But there was some problems with that. Only regular meetings I found out are paid. None of the extra meetings. So there was a problem with that, and this, this scenario has fixed that. Only the main meetings of the planning commission are paid. And there was a mishap. All the extra work sessions were being paid, and that is not the case. That was never supposed to happen. So just the regular, so that's been correct.
Bobby, maybe we could just add up what that costs in total. I mean, right, that's the total between now and.
So you're going to think of the process to get rid of all of them.
This year that I've talked to on both planning and BZA. Didn't see any problem. If it's an incentive to enjoy and work hard, so be it. But having come from the media where I was expending a lot of time and effort. And not realizing that other committees received stipends, I was a little.
Our secretary's getting fifty dollars a week. I was just handing the check back.
Still, I think King and Queen, one of the committees gets a sandwich and a drink or something like that.
Why do you keep bringing up King and Queen?
Comparing what?
That's me, Bill. That's me. That's not Ed. I bring up King and Queen.
And, Mr. Tastner, the economic development, two hundred and dollars, that's still on the table.
That is in the capital fund. Two hundred and fifty thousand of that has been encumbered, so there is an available one point seven five million.
Do we need to roll that? We need to have that in the resolution, right? That needs to continue to roll over every year? Okay.
We are pursuing grants for broadband expansion. If you have the count of will be. We've we've got an interesting problem. We have fiber broadband. We can't find one single provider to go out and expand all that way. There's competing. Entities. It's an interesting problem to have. But we're going to probably be needing some. Private company matching money.
Well, you also have the two hundred and twenty five thousand for the broadband initiative as well that is still sitting there. That will.
I didn't see that anywhere else. Thanks for reminding me.
Yeah, we, that is one of the things that. When Natasha came a few months back and had y'all approve the capital roll forward, it'll be part of the annual budget now. So everything that is left in the capital, you will see being rolled forward.
That's been there three years.
At least three or four years, yeah.
Has never been.
The tape was there. I put it there because we were looking at any opportunity that we had to be able to move quickly. We didn't need to wait a month or two, especially with the previous board, to wait months in order to be able to write a check, make. Studies.
But you you would still have to come to the board for this money to be here.
Yeah, but we don't have to.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
We don't have to negotiate to an extent.
Yes.
Reminding Natasha, it would be chart that you ran, the table that you ran from, I think, point eight six down to point seven zero, I think, on tax impact. We're sticking with point eight six. Would like to be able to. Back that. With what the implication would be with anything lower. Because of your perspective, Natasha, that we can't go over than eight point eight six at this point, given the unknowns.
We can't because it's still, that eighty six cents is still calculated off the two thousand and fourteen assessed value. Which is lower than what it should be. Now, we may face that the seventy three cents as calculated for the back portion of the FY twenty one budget. That is something that y'all could probably address because that will be at the new assessed value. But I would definitely not recommend changing the eighty six cents.
But the point seven three is based on. A suspected twenty percent.
Yes.
Across the board, or that is not every, how, only, every piece of property is going to increase in value by twenty percent. That is not.
Correct. Residential primarily will be a twenty percent. Commercial will be completely different. Land values alone have pretty much stayed stable. So you'll be receiving a better breakdown probably within the next two months, but overall, twenty percent for residential. Is going to be, yes, is what you're going to see. Yeah. The other areas are are much lower.
And I think that was just a guess. You'll have the exact numbers when that comes out, and it could be maybe seventy two cents, or maybe seventy four cents, depending on if it was, becomes twenty or eighteen or whatever.
But it'll be the one percent.
Right.
By code.
Legally, one percent over what the equalized rate is supposed to be. We have to legally make it exactly even.
Plus the one percent.
Now, we can increase it one percent without public hearing.
Correct. If you want to retain more, you have to have a public hearing.
Well, that's effectively, you know, that you can't rush your fractionalized rate, which some counties do, but most counties won't.
But you will know the finalized numbers for the new assessment by September. So that you will have those to review, and then Natasha can run, you know, all kinds of scenarios. Prior to getting into the budget cycle, and also then watching the economy and see what's going on. So it'll give y'all more time to kind of address those numbers.
Just trying to posture for some of the comments. If I may add, Mr. Chairman, I was four years ago at nine twenty nine this morning.
About the same individual that always four years.
The same individual.
That's what we.
Or who's around there.
We can't answer any of those things.
Y'all guys must be getting tired because I can, I can only pick up half of what y'all were saying. I don't think I need to hear it, though.
Maybe, maybe she's just getting tired, sir.
Oh, I'm tired, okay. That's the truth.
Okay, so if I have my marching orders?
Let's just review this real quick. I'm going to capture everything and make sure we're all on the same page. So we're going to tell Bobby to go ahead and move forward with her recommendations on the second annual leave changes. We are going to reduce the additional staff request to one deputy and one EMS. We are. Well, Matt suggested we take two hundred and fifty dollars off of his training, so I guess we go ahead and do that. The assistant manager at the rural animal shelter will be deleted. The monthly regional library, we will ask them to model what level funding would look like. We're going to keep our volunteer organizations whole. We're going to work to reduce legal use. We've zeroed training. And that, I think, is is everything that I've got that we've effectively changed in these discussions today.
Could those be quickly captured and talked to us?
Oh, yeah, the list, most definitely.
So, yeah, if we can get a tally up of what what the savings look like. And then what the answers to the questions come back looking like.
Okay.
I think we're good.
Good.
And then what else we need?
Well, what we'll do is we will scrub the budget. We will apply all of these. We will also look at. Reworking the load of numbers and and looking at what the fifteen percent on the auto insurance. And then we will send you out a revised budget. For you to review, and. Within that timeframe, we will talk to the library and find out what, because they'll be able to tell us pretty quickly. What the impact of level funding will do. So.
So the actual review is the twenty seventh?
Well, Natasha, could we have this to the board by Monday? I could do, I could do this over the weekend.
I didn't do that.
Bobby just volunteered to do this.
Just give us a couple hours. It'll be done by the end of the day. It will. I guarantee it will. It will be.
I guess you're saying that because Monday.
No, Monday is not a regular meeting. Right. I mean, the twenty seventh was when we would be bringing you hopefully the budget to approve.
Right.
So. If we address all of this, the main thing that we're going to have a question about is going to be the library. That's really it. Everything else we can scrub and present a revised budget. I'd say we could provide it to you on Monday with information from the library, and then if you can just let us know. After talking to each other, if this is going to be okay to move forward with, then we will develop the. Ordinances and the resolutions for the twenty seventh. And then that way, we can send it out to you beforehand. You can look at it and see how everything marries up. So.
We don't need to set up another meeting, just say it online or call.
Anybody?
Do that.
I don't think the work that we have in here to hatch out the rest of it, based on discussions today warrants another meeting, just more discussion probably from chairman to the member back to the county administrator.
Okay, so you get something to do this maybe Monday, y'all get back to me, day, night, whatever, and then, so that is our regular meeting for twenty seven.
The twenty seven.
For that.
No.
And will it be, I guess, still telemeeting about it?
Well. Probably.
Well, I mean, the governor's order is extended in May this point.
That's what I was wondering. I didn't hear that. So he pushed it up. He canceled the June.
No, 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 no. That's that's a different one. Fifty five is still an effective June ten. I think three extended until May eighth.
Yes.
It's sort of crazy because he's opening up stuff May eighth. You cannot. Don't let house. Yeah, until June ten. That's what I was wondering. Okay, that's what I did.
Well, the June ten order can always be moved up and canceled, so I assume it might extend it again.
But, yeah, I would.
So it's going to be a Zoom telemeeting, or is it going to be, it is? Okay.
Yes, and Olivia, do we, what do we have on the twenty seventh's agenda? We have all of the resolutions and ordinances for the budget.
We have a lot of things.
Like.
Well, we didn't have March's regular meeting, so we have all of that as well.
The minutes? Okay, but.
We'll have all of April.
But no, I'm talking about, you know, presentations from departments.
Outside of contention.
We don't have.
Well, it's really up to you all. Whatever you, if you want to push things that can wait still, we can do that. From March, if you want to still wait to hear those presentations, we can.
Well, the only thing that we have is VDOT, the public hearing, and I talked to Joyce McGowan, and they are coming with down with directives. Should let us know. It'll probably occur in May, so I'm hoping in May we will be able to go back to our normal business. Then, of course, we have, Ron wants to bring fee revisions to the board. That requires public hearing because it's by ordinance. There's that Sweet Sue.
The large summer.
Resolution that the planning commission had requested the board prove.
But we have. Two thousand months.
Yeah.
We have to.
And then Natasha, you don't have anything.
The sheriff had his annual report.
Yeah, but that's stuff that's.
I would think anything outside of the budget or immediate land use issues, you know, I would think most land use issues should probably be put off until we, especially those that go requiring.
Right. I was hoping that we could, I'm hoping that May will allow us to come back together again, and then you can start hearing, you know, other information. But no, we will just keep it to the budget, and. We can send out the minutes as part of the twenty seventh so that y'all can go ahead and get those reviewed and approved.
The only thing that I might like to get in there is get. Fire me a mess, just a briefing.
I know, okay.
On current status of. Successes, problems.
Okay.
Anything like that.
Because of the reduction in personnel.
Well, just just seeing how they're coming along because obviously, you know, they're the frontline here, so I think we would want to just be apprised of their situation. Would have been. Yeah, any issue.
Okay.
I would really like to hear a milestone review of the comp plan. I know it's not complete. I know it's being worked. Where are we? What are the challenges? Is there anything that we're going to be surprised by? Let's go ahead and highlight it, at least cursory, in early in the project.
Well, we're not working on the comp plan right now. The comp plan is, we're working on the ordinances. That is what is going to lead into the comp plan. What we're going to be doing is putting a bid out for a company to assist us in developing. A new comp plan, and that will occur in July, so.
But I want to introduce you. What are the ordinances being worked, and what are the?
Everything, everything getting revamped. And so that's what we're working on now, that this COVID thing's put a damp on everything. And Ron's still there. Can you give us something else? Or could you maybe come up with something by our next meeting? I know we're doing, I mean, like I said, we're doing all of them, so.
So just an update?
Yeah, I mean, in a nutshell, it shouldn't be going public here soon. I'm going to be speaking public participation on the draft ordinances. So that should be going out in the next two weeks, actually. And the only other thing I have as far as wanting the board to look at is. I'm waiting for Ed's comments to come out.
We got a terrible.
Tell him to stand there at the door.
Tell the board we can wear before it goes. Some comments.
Or, what do you, you probably don't normally do that.
Goes planning commission in the public.
It, it, because of Bob, we do, because the planning commission is heard at the planning commission level, and then it goes to the board. We can, I mean. We can access all that stuff if we want. It's not, it's not an issue of that. It's an issue of the order of things. Again, Ed wants the briefing on where we are. Doc, right now, if he wants it, you can prepare a briefing for the board where we are right now before we're having a public hearing. At the planning commission level.
Okay, on the ordinances.
On the ordinances.
What are they? What are the, what are your main issues? Are there any challenges? And then it's just a thirty seven thousand.
I can bring that.
Or you can send that to your.
All right, yeah, I can. Eric?
I'm making a review. Ah, motion adjourned does not have, no discussion on a motion adjourned. But withholding a second, what else would you like?
I can't hear a word y'all were saying.
Being honest with the person on all that.
Y'all walking away from the microphone, or me, or what?
I'm right in front of the microphone.
I didn't hear it. I'm glad I didn't. My ears burning?
Again, the perception of one supervisor, you know, what you can then go.
Is that my friend?
The staff and the rest of my peers and the reception, allowing us, and then to ask questions. Again, been sitting in the back bench over the past years, but being up here, they're calling, they put some of the decisions, I appreciate.
I'll second that. Ed's going to do it there.
Before y'all leave, are y'all wearing masks? No?
You are with the microphone.
Is anybody in a tieback suit?
Not yet here. Now we have one with a mask on. Ah, hold on.
All right, it was good talking to y'all. Be safe.
Hold on. All right. Mr. Garber? All right.
We got enough here to burn it anyway.
Mr. Hodges?
Aye.
Mr. Ruskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Warren?
Aye.
Mr.?
Aye. Meeting is adjourned.